Yeah. Calling the order, this meeting of the Board of Education for Sacramento Unified School District. We're gonna start off with the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I saw another person said it too. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 4.2, ceremonial oath of office, given to newly-elected student board member. And we're gonna be having that done by Member Pritchett. Yes?
Alright, I'm really excited to be doing something new tonight for our student board members to be able to swear in our new student school board members. Alright, if you could please join me in welcoming student board member Liliana Gracie Miller Segura. Alright, if you could please raise your right hand. Okay, I, please state your name.
I, Liliana Gracie Miller Segura.
I'm gonna move this microphone over by you so people can hear you.
Do swear that I will support and uphold
Do swear that I will support and uphold
The vision and mission and core values
The vision and mission and core values
Of the Sacramento City Unified School District
Of the Sacramento City Unified School District
And the work of the Board of Education
And the work of the Board of Education
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any reservation or purpose
Without any reservation or purpose
Of evasion
Of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
That and that I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I'm about to enter
The duties upon which I'm about to enter
On behalf of all Sacramento City Unified School District students.
On behalf of all Sacramento City Unified School District students.
Yay!
Thank you to our new sworn-in student board member and also thank you to Member Pritchett for championing this cause and pushing it through. This is going to be a great thing for all future student board members as well. Now going on to 4.3, our broadcast statement by Member Segura.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cablecast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Sunday, September 24th at 6:00 PM and Monday, September 25th at 12:00 PM. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form which are located at the back of the room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the items' presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you so much. We're going to go to item 4.4, presented by Member Singh, stellar teacher introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So finding a stellar student or an educator, I have a couple of words. So finding a stellar student or educator is always a tough decision. But it's definitely made much easier when you engage on campus, speak to parents and students. Because from those conversations, there's always a couple of names that are mentioned that come across from multiple individuals. So it's through that process that I have the pleasure of recognizing Mr. Darn Howard this evening as our stellar educator. So Mr. D, as students call him, began teaching in 2011. He started leading the Johnson Corporate Business Academy about eight years ago, which generally has about 120 students in the program per year. He's loved by students across the campus. You'll often see students on campus calling his name from near and far. You'll find students hanging out in his classroom before school, during lunch, and after school. The reason is that Mr. D makes them feel safe and gives them a space to be themselves in a nonjudgmental way. He not only provides a safe space for students, but also students who are not registered in the academy. He spends many of his hours outside of his own schedule, including summer and weekends, to ensure the academy is running and thriving. He gives his students advice and many students have shared that he has been a parent figure and a role model for those who don't have a parent or father figure in their lives. Many of these students at Hyrum Johnson come from low-income homes and neighborhoods and mainly students identify as BIPOC. Mr. D shares about his upbringing as a young man and his students can connect and build trust with him. In a time when we must think about the multiple pathways to success beyond high school through traditional pathways of college, it's important to note that Mr. D mentors his students that show or express interest in starting their own businesses, something that's beneficial for students no matter what path they choose. He has helped students with their process of filing for an LLC, launching small businesses, and helping with building a social media platform and preparing to budget and create a successful inventory system. These students are mentioned by Mr. D even beyond graduating, are mentored by Mr. D beyond graduation. The most impacted students are the ones who are often given the label prior to being a part of JCPA. He pours his love and strives to keep all of his students, and strives to see all of his students succeed, often refusing to remove students from the program before trying to reach those students and offer all the support and resources he can. He's beloved by many students and families and we're so excited to offer this award to him tonight.
So thank you, Board, very much for this award. I really couldn't do it without Cika up in the CTE department. She's really helped me through this whole, my journey as a CTE teacher. And thank you to the wonderful staff at Hyrum Johnson. And thank you guys so much. And thank you to the parent who nominated me. Listen, I love these kids so much. They're like my own. So thank you very much, you guys.
Mr. D, could you please come back up? We actually can come down and take a photo with you. Thank you, Mr. D. Yes, sir, take it. I don't wanna, just don't stand behind me.
Thank you, thank you so much.
That's that parent was...
Can't use mom?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we're gonna go to item 5.0, announcements taken in closed session. To you, Ann.
Good evening, President Rhodes. There are three announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the Board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of seven to zero. And Superintendent Allen will make the last two announcements.
Thank you, Ann. I am pleased to announce that the Board approved the following appointments. By a vote of seven to zero, the Board approved the appointment of Crystal Thomas as Assistant Superintendent Special Education. Also, by a vote of seven to zero, the Board approved the appointment of Matthew Kempin as Principal of Theodore Judah.
Congratulations to everyone. Now we're gonna go to item 6.0, agenda adoption. I will move for adoption. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we're gonna go ahead and go to item 7.0, public comment. Brian, do we have any public comments today?
We do indeed. We have about 15 speakers signed up. So we will begin with, we'll begin with Sarah Bailey. And one other person has given their time to Sarah, so she has four minutes. Yes, you're correct. Sorry about that. Three, three total, so six minutes for Sarah.
Ms. Bailey, good to see you. You have six minutes?
Yeah, nice to see you all. So I, my name is Sarah Bailey and I'm an instructional aide at AMWIN Public Waldorf. And I work in a special day classroom. I've been doing this work in the district for about six years and I really, really, really love my job and I'm really good at it. And I would like more than anything to continue doing it, but as it stands, it's not sustainable. I don't make enough money. I don't have enough hours. But I come here tonight to share a little bit about my job and how it could be more sustainable with a lot of hope. This feels very different than maybe where we would have been last year, so I'm really grateful. Lots of shifts and changes have happened within the Board and having you Superintendent Allen at the helm feels really wonderful and what's happened with the teachers. So there's lots of hope, but there is definitely a lot of anxiety and trepidation. Myself and my colleagues, there's just lots of people living right there on the edge and we're really in a place where we need to have support and change. So I'm gonna just speak a little bit about some of the specific things for my job. All classified employees, I think everyone can agree, we need to be paid more per hour. Many of us need more hours. That's very much true for me. So I'm gonna share a little bit about that. As it currently stands, special day classroom aides, and I think often aides across the Board, our hours are a little bit less than, or a lot less depending, than the actual hours students are in school. So what that means is problematic for a variety of reasons. First one's safety. Imagine when the kids are coming, not on buses this year, in a myriad of cars, unmarked. That's a whole different public comment. It feels really dangerous. We've got lots of kids coming in and out. These are kids that are some of our most vulnerable students and to not have aides there, if our hours are less, we come after the day begins or we leave before the day ends. So that's one place. It's a safety issue. The second thing is, I have zero minutes, zero minutes to collaborate and plan with the teacher that I work with. We teach, our class is fifth through eighth grade and I do lots of push-in. I'm working with lots of other teachers. I don't have any time built in where I can say, hey, this thing is working for this student or we maybe need to change something over here. So what I'm forced to do is to use my unpaid time to do that or to not collaborate and to not be able to talk to the teacher about what's not working. And that is not good for kids, but it's also not fair for me to have to use my own time to do that, which I do. The other piece is, it's just about building community, to be there when the students get there, to be a part of the whole day, to greet them. Some, most of us oftentimes spend more time with some of those students than the teacher does. So to not have us be at those bookends of the day is a really missed opportunity. The other piece, if you're not, if people aren't thinking about what's best for kids and what's best for their staff, is a potential lawsuit. I'm not sure what the ed code says, but I know that there are ratios that apply to these kids that have IEPs and I'm not sure it would be in a line if those, if we are not there for all those hours. So that's something, I'm not sure what the answer to is, but if lawsuits is something that speaks to you more than just building community and support in a school, that's something to look at. So many of my colleagues from my site are not here. Many of them wanted to be here. There are so many barriers that stand in the way of many classified folks getting here. One of my, the people that I work with, she's a single mom. She has to work a second job. She can't come to these, whether it's you can't put gas in your tank. There's all kinds of reasons. So because they're not here doesn't mean they don't have a story to share with you, specific to their job. I'm sharing my specific thing, but there's all kinds of specifics that are separate from this. Those stories deserve to be heard and maybe what we need to do is to flip this us coming to you to share stories. I invite you to come to AMWIN. It's a real invitation. Come and hang out with us for a day. Sit down when we have a break and talk to us and find out like what's working. Where are those places that changes could be made? Because we have an amazing group of people there and I think that's probably true at every school site. We're a family. We care about each other. But I also, it doesn't feel okay to work for free and it doesn't feel okay to only work those hours and not serve the students. So that's something that I really hope you all can look at and I'm available if you want to talk to me more about it. Like I said, it's a real invitation to come and visit us at our school site. We have, come visit with our front office folks, because those ladies are doing all kinds of things outside their job description and getting no compensation for it. So I feel hopeful, I feel anxious, I really appreciate your time and I feel, I so appreciate the change in the general feeling of coming to these. I haven't been in a while, but I used to come in the past. So I'm really appreciative and I'm hopeful and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Next speaker is Margie Birch. Two people have donated their time, so Ms. Birch gets six minutes.
Hello, Ms. Birch. Welcome.
Good evening, School Board. Good evening, Superintendent. I am one of many families called today from an apologetic principal on the other line. A principal who wants to do her job and invite all children to come and learn. And no stability is critical to childhood growth and attachment. A principal who said while I was sobbing in her office earlier today, I'm so sorry. If I could do anything, I would. Because SCUSD has kicked my child out from the only school she has ever, ever felt safe in. And I am terrified about the amount of instability SCUSD will create in my daughter's life. Just like Principal Bennett and all the good and amazing principals throughout our district. I know how much stability matters. I have five children. All of these children were adopted from foster care. Before they came into our lives, chaos and instability were normal parts of their life. Stability is the one thing my child Angelina has not had this year. Last October, Angelina turned up the TV very loudly, as loud as it could go. So she couldn't hear her teenage sister, my daughter, get arrested by the police upstairs. Because even though her older sister is only a teenager, my daughter is also an addict. Because that's how she dealt with the instability of her life. The instability of having to change schools, having to change families, having to change houses over and over and over again. The pain was too much for her, so she turned to drugs. One day, she will be ready to heal again. But for now, that is how she is dealing with that instability. Angelina is also from foster care. This is from the day she was adopted. I'm not gonna share her story publicly, but let me tell you, she's one of the most resilient and wonderful children I have ever known. When we had to leave her last school because the school hired someone previously fired in an incident related to him touching children inappropriately, I was so sad. That school was supposed to be her forever school and it is no way Angelina's fault that she had to, that we had to create instability under her feet to keep her safe. Even though I applied for SCUSD school placement over a month before school started, we didn't know she'd be lucky enough to get into Tahoe until 7:00 PM the night before school started. Even though I called constituent services, went to the enrollment center, called the enrollment center and called local schools, I could not give Angelina the stability she desperately needed because until the night before school started, I could not even tell Angelina where she was going to go to school. But it was okay. It was worth it. She ended up at our neighborhood school and I was ecstatic. A racially diverse art school with a loving community where many students lived close by. I'm a trained middle school teacher and I signed up to become an art docent, donated books to the new library and signed up for the PTA because this was the first school Angelina felt safe at. This is the first school where she made friends and played on the soccer field and loved telling me about her wonderful day at school every single day. If you make Angelina leave Tahoe, I think I might break. There are so many hard things parents can't protect our children from. But this sort of instability isn't supposed to be one of them. We're supposed to be able to trust the schools and trust the people who lead our schools to want to do the best thing for our children and moving children after they've started is not the best thing for our children. And while that's the issue I'm here for tonight, I want to link it to another issue. Just as Sarah just talked about, tonight, the SEIU is asking for a pay raise to get them a little closer to a livable wage. We are in this situation because SCUSD has not paid your staff enough to hire competent staff who can predict these problems and solve them before children's placements are disrupted. It's not my child's fault that SCUSD failed to get the necessary staff for the school or the necessary staff for the enrollment center or the necessary staff for the analytics. So you knew how many fourth graders were going to be in Tahoe Elementary this year. It's not my kid's fault that SCUSD doesn't pay a living wage, so anyone who has to depend on a job to survive has to go to a different district or face homelessness or food insecurity and cannot provide for their own families. Sarah was being kind. The poverty these families are in is reprehensible. We are in this situation because SESU has not paid your staff a living wage.
Go ahead and finish.
Any chance somebody wants to donate me two minutes? Thank you, Becky. We have incredible staff who work so hard to make sure our children get as many needs met as possible, who drive our buses, who sweep our floors and watch our kids out on the yard, and enroll our children into appropriate schools. I know schools have been put under, in an impossible position, constantly being underfunded and politicized, but our learning community should be people first. There isn't enough money. We all know that, but you are the leaders. You are supposed to make sure your constituents, your families and children are taken care of. The teachers and classified staff don't have to go to food pantries to feed their children. They shouldn't have to do that. Our staff and families are suffering from a lack of money, but more importantly, a lack of being cared for by our communities, by you. We are not, you are not caring for us because if you knew we needed the money, your care would include fighting for the money, not destabilizing our most vulnerable populations. Because that's who's hurt, right? Let's be honest. The kids whose lives are so chaotic that they don't even know what school they're going to the day before their first day of school. The poor kids, the kids who have chaos in their lives. We trust schools to be a safe place for our children to grow into their best selves, into the next generation that will lead our future. But our children can't be safe without good staff and they can't be safe if you make them powerless, promising them a good education at one school and then disrupting their stability the second week of school. If our students can't trust our schools, who can they trust?
Thank you. Brian, we have our next speaker, Brian?
Next speaker is Marley Minamide for four minutes.
Hello, Marley. How are you? No worries, no worries. Safe place. Feel free.
Hi, we're here to support. I have a posse.
All good.
Hello, School Board. My name is Marley Minamide. I'm speaking on behalf of Tahoe staff. I'm here tonight because the district is telling us that we must consolidate classes and because of this, we lose a teacher. Four grade levels of students will be shuffled and some of our students will be sent away from Tahoe. Our district vision states that the system is inequitable by design and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness. It's on our website. Many Tahoe students have dealt with trauma and insecurities. They need someone looking out for them, supporting them. We have students being sent away that are previous foster youth, a student that just moved to Tahoe, and a refugee new to the country. Instead of providing a safe and supportive space, we are sending them to yet another new school. Research has found students generally lose about three months of reading and math learning each time they switch schools. Various studies have found student mobility and particularly multiple moves associated with lower school engagement, poorer grades, and a higher risk of dropping out of high school. Relationships and the progress we've started to see will be torn apart. Don't add to the stress and anxiety of our kids that they've already experienced. Our classes are slightly under-enrolled, but not small. Allow classes to be slightly smaller than normal so that students can learn, grow, and reach their greatness. Students need great teachers to help them learn, grow, and feel safe. Our district will be removing a teacher from our school that is giving all of this and more to her students. She has poured her heart and soul into her classroom. She has a heart for the kids we serve, especially the ones that need the extra bit of love and patience. She meets the kids where they're at and wants to help each of them. She has done extra trainings and is putting strategies into place every day. Change is happening in her room. Now, CSUSD is telling her she must leave Tahoe and leave her students. We beg you to keep Tahoe classes the way they are, keep our teacher and provide our students with the best opportunity for learning. Change the system and do what's right for our kids.
Thank you. We have next speaker, Brian?
Next speaker, Heather Bennett, followed by Scholastica Schatz.
Hello, Ms. Bennett.
Hello, Board members and interim Superintendent Allen. I am Heather Bennett, the principal of Tahoe Elementary School. I know that as a district, we have spent a lot of time recently talking about being anti-racist and anti-biased and trauma-informed. I also know that our core value states we recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness. That being said, I would like to take this time to confront a part of our system that is inequitable and that I wholeheartedly believe needs to be interrupted. Each fall, we start school with our students assigned to classes and a teacher. Our students work hard to prepare the classrooms for their incoming students, and then once school starts, they pour into the students in order to create a safe, positive learning environment in which our students can grow and succeed. They build relationships, they build community. Then we get to or near the 15th day of instruction, and those relationships and communities are rocked. When a school has too many students for the number of teachers on campus or too few, and there are empty seats, we go through the process of leveling. From my experience, leveling is the opposite of a trauma-informed practice. Trauma-informed practices provide consistency and predictability for students. The way in which we currently level our classes is trauma-causing. Moving students from one class to another after three weeks of building relationships and rapport with classmates and trusted adults causes trauma. Sending students to other schools because theirs is too full causes trauma. Hiring new teachers and then shuffling them around to other schools after they've spent hours of their lives preparing for and getting to know their current students causes trauma. I proudly lead an inclusive Title I school, and many of my students come to campus every day having experienced trauma that is not within our sphere of influence, but what happens on our campus is. I know that the process of leveling and concapping is just one of the current practices in our system that needs to be interrupted, but we need to move beyond talking about being trauma-informed and making actionable changes that cause the right, can right the inequities that are in our system. Our families, students, and staff deserve better.
What is our speaker's name?
Scholastica Schatz.
Nice to meet you, Scholastica. I just wanted to acknowledge your name. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name, my, oh.
The crew's coming back, crew's coming back.
My name is Scholastica Schatz, or Ms. S., and I'm a teacher at Tahoe Elementary School. I would like to start by letting everyone know that I willingly left an amazing district to come to SCUSD in order to have the opportunity to be a teacher at Tahoe. I applied to a third, fourth-grade split class so that I could be at Tahoe. Now, my class is being collapsed, and not only am I being surplus from Tahoe, but three of my students are being displaced from their school. Last night was back-to-school night. I welcomed everyone into the classroom that I've poured my heart into. I shook hands with the parents of the children who I knew would soon be displaced. I got to hear parents say, "My child loves being here." I can't finish it. Um, no, they feel safe and welcome. Just to know that the work we put into building this classroom community is going to be torn out from under us. They are going to join a new class with a new teacher and have to jump in and join them wherever they are. Yes, kids are resilient, and I am too, but is it really necessary to cause unpredictability and instability by uprooting several established classes? We are not okay with being pawns in a twisted game of numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. S.
Next speaker is Alma Garcia, followed by Elvia Vazquez and Valerie Williams Crawford.
Welcome.
Gracias. Buenas noches, miembros del comité.
Good evening, members of the board.
Es un gusto estar aquí.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Yo tengo tres hijos estudiando en escuelas de aquí del distrito.
I have three kids studying here in this school district.
Participo en el grupo PAS.
I participate in a good part.
And también en Sacramento Act.
And also Sacramento Act.
Ah, yo solo voy a hacer un breve comentario pero muy importante.
I'm gonna make a brief statement that is very important.
Estoy aquí para solicitarles, por favor.
I'm here to ask, please.
Más difusión de información sobre las escuelas comunitarias.
To spread more information about the community schools.
Ah, muchos padres teniendo hijos en escuelas comunitarias.
A lot of parents having kids in community schools.
No saben que es una escuela comunitaria.
They don't know what a community school is.
No saben cómo participar.
They don't know how to participate.
No saben qué beneficios pueden tener.
They don't know the kind of benefits that they can have.
Ya, ya son 18 escuelas comunitarias.
There's 18 community schools.
Ah, más o menos como una cuarta parte de las escuelas del distrito.
About a fourth of the schools in the school districts.
Considero bien importante.
I think that is very important.
La difusión de información para que los padres.
To spread their information so that the parents.
La comunidad.
The community.
Los estudiantes.
The students.
Y todos podamos participar.
And everybody can participate.
Para el mejoramiento de las escuelas comunitarias.
Betterment of the community schools.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Buenas.
Hi, my name is Elvia Vazquez. I'm a parent and a community organizer in Sacramento. I have a child in this district. I also have nephews and nieces attending to this district, and I want to beg you, I want to ask you, please, to help the parents to be involved in the schools, not just community schools. As an organizer, I have the experience where many parents, like Alma said, they don't know what is a community school is, so I think you guys are now doing a good job. We want to be part of our children's education. To me, it's like when you go to the doctor, the doctor makes a decision, the nurses do, and the patient has nothing to say. I feel like it's the way here, and I have older children, so this is not new. My older child, my older son is 30, and he was here in the system, in this system, which is bad. Community schools is just for that, for parent involvement, but my experience, like I said, it hasn't happened, and I don't know why. Our parents and caregivers want to be part of our children's life in the school, but parent involvement has to happen, not just from parents, but also from inside the school, truly, genuinely. The schools are not just yours, it's our children. The system has been bad for many, many years. I have older children, like I said, and data can say a lot, but without data, I can't tell you a lot. The schools are not healthy, and I am sure you guys know. It's hurting our children.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us. Mr. President, Valerie from PAS, and I just wanted to reiterate, we appreciate the improvements that are proposed for special education. I just wanted to offer you some insight about my personal situation also, which I'm a member of the PAS, so they've heard this story, but I have two children in special education second year at JFK. They are not currently going to the campus, and we're dealing with the absence issues, trying to get a transfer made for schools that don't have teachers. My seventh grader also was transferring to Cap City Independent, who doesn't have a teacher for her, so we went to her old school so we can access curriculum. I was told that she cannot have the makeup work because of a teacher union contract that would be disrupted. That may be very true, but I just wanted to give you a little perspective about what some of our children are going through. She left her school, John Cabrio, because of the email situation that occurred last year where the emails, kids were emailing each other, and she came to me and told me, "Mom, I was threatened," and so I just think that I'm not being protected at the school, and I want to go to independent study. She's lonely, and she would love to go to a school, so we just thought until we could get placement, that we would get access to curriculum. There's just so much going on, and I just want you all to know, anything that you can do to see about these schools and these campuses, when we come to see you, we really need you because there's so much going on individually. One of my colleagues is not here, but her child at JFK, he got sick, and she was called and told that he was taking drugs. He wasn't taking drugs. He tried a hot gummy, and all he could say was, "I took a gummy," so it was assumed that he took drugs. So we, you know, still need to meet with that administrator as a group. We're going to support her, but please be the ears and be the eyes and the voice for the people that are here that will actually say something if you can hear these stories. We really need you. Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate being here and being known again.
Thank you, guys, so much. And also, for my PAS folks, I hope you guys stay to item 9.1. I think it will be of interest to you.
We have two more speakers, Amy De La Sal and Ingrid Hutchins.
Hello, Ms. De La Sal.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. It's gonna be a late night, I guess. I am a parent in the district. My oldest kid is 16. I have three kids that have attended public school. I have never been to a board meeting until now. I think some of you have heard about the literacy wars and the reading crisis that's happening and that there's probably, you've probably seen some of the webinars and the documentaries about some misguided teaching approaches. Nods, no, maybe not. Okay, if you haven't, please watch Right to Read next week. It's showing at the Guild Theater in Oak Park, 5:00 PM. There still should be tickets, free tickets for anybody associated with school board members, of course, and the Literacy Foundation probably has reached out to you, invited you to a lunch to talk to experts about literacy. But here's the deal, I don't think any of you are surprised at all to know that our reading scores are awful all over the state, all over the United States. They are terrible, and we've done nothing, and we write our little S-CAP plans or whatever they're called, and it doesn't help, but we know the answers, and now we have to implement them. So my pitch to you all is, don't just hand over the money to somebody that says, "I'm going to solve the problem." Get involved in this and listen and think and understand what's going on because we need to, again, disrupt what has been happening, and so far, people can't question certain root causes of the literacy problem. For example, here's my fun fact of the day. The teacher, let's see, National Council on Teacher Quality studied how well teachers are taught to teach reading. I want you to think about that. Do you think that teachers are taught to teach reading not very well? So only two out of 41 schools. So that's my pitch. Thank you. Get involved.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker, Ingrid Hutchins, followed by Mo Kashmiri.
Hello, Ms. Hutchins.
I have no notes today, so I'll be winging it. So I'm here today as a proud TK teacher and a proud SCTA board member to support our SEIU brothers and sisters. I can't do my job at all without them, and especially this year in my TK role, I have a instructional aide. You would be amazed to see what our instructional aides do with and for our children every single day. They need to have a livable wage because we can't, we can't educate without them, not just, it's not hyperbole. I legally can't teach my class without my instructional aide. I have 18 children. Our numbers are 12 to 1, but if we're not paying them well enough, they're not going to want to work for us. And now we have an issue where we don't have instructional aide subs. My aide unfortunately was hit by a very huge family tragedy last week, and I was able to get a sub that was a credential teacher who accidentally got that position, so of course she did not want to come back for that pay any other days. And then today I had a sub for her, and I won't have one again tomorrow. So Friday last week, I had a sub. I did not have one Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, and then I had one today, but I probably will not have one tomorrow because we can't bring in people who want to do the job if we are not willing to pay the money. Now, luckily, I'm at a site where people are helping out, you know, they have a prep they're coming down, we have yard duties that are coming down, and they are trying to keep us in ratio, but we can't do that as a school district, keeping everything together like that. And so, you know, we need to support all of our SEIU members, but I just wanted to highlight our instructional aides because, again, we can't do our jobs without them, not just because of their help, but because legally, we are not allowed to be without them. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, who's our next speaker?
Last speaker is Mo Kashmiri.
Mr. Kashmiri, welcome.
Hello, Board. My name is Mo Kashmiri. I'm a parent of a student at MEWOC. I'm just grateful to be up here and talk about good news today, which is I'm just excited about all the board and leadership changes. I know change takes time, but I feel like we're moving in the right direction. We're moving from a culture of conflict to a culture of collaboration, which I love, and I'm so excited that we're moving in this direction. I think it's, and it's due to the new energy and the new direction this board is taking and the leadership we have in place. You know, and I'm grateful that we were able to start a year with a contract with our teachers, and it changed what I was hearing. Instead of a lot of complaints, I hear a lot of appreciation, and even where there's challenges, I hear people saying, "The board's doing what they need to do," right? And I am so excited that you've been doing such a great job at that. I would just also, and in addition, I want to also say that it's also time to make sure our classified staff also get a fair contract. They make the lowest of anyone in the district, sometimes getting three to six hours, and they're just barely making it with the cost of living has skyrocketed. I went to lunch yesterday, and a burger, a fries, and a drink cost me $25, right? And no, you know, like, these are just not, people can't sustain and live on the wages that they're being paid here. So we, I'm looking forward to this board helping us resolve a contract that treats the classified staff fairly. And lastly, I just want to say, I would also hope this board would help improve the democratic process by allowing people to speak over Zoom as well. It doesn't make any, we know that parents can't always take time to come to the board meetings. We need to go to them, and that's part of disrupting the inequitable practices as well. So let's, let's open it up and give more folks a chance to have their say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kashmiri. Do we have any more speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you to all the speakers who came and gave a little bit of your time and your heart and your thoughts today. We really, truly appreciate it. We're going to go to item 8.0, communications, and we're going to hear from SCTA first. Hello, welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Allen and Nikki Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Once again, we want to commend the supermajority of this school board and Superintendent Allen for your recent steps to change the direction of our school district and move it in a more constructive and positive way. The changes during this brief period of time have been significant. Unfortunately, there are some so-called education leaders that are still clinging to the false narrative about our district's finances that have repeatedly been disproven. Tonight, you will review the SCUSD's unaudited actuels for 2022, 2023, and as recently as this last June, the district projected an end-of-the-year unrestricted surplus of $31 million. Tonight, you will see that the district's unrestricted surplus is actually $70 million, placing SCUSD in the strongest financial position of any district in the region, even after the previous superintendent walked away from negotiations to add back the days lost to the strike that he had forced to happen and lost after telling the community that if teachers didn't agree to give a $10,000 pay cut, that SCUSD would go into insolvency. But here we stand today, learning that SCUSD's unrestricted reserve fund now exceeds $135 million. That's not including your restricted fund, that's just your unrestricted fund, $135 million, meaning that this district can more than afford the recently negotiated salary increases for teachers and a similar settlement for our classified brothers and sisters in SEIU, and you can make every effort to avoid concapping and splits as you have agreed with the teachers to do and as you have promised the community and our students to act in an equitable manner. You have the money and the power to do that. Despite the facts, however, predictably, sc- money and the power to do that. Despite the facts, however, predictably, SCOE's Dave Gordon has dashed off another doom and gloom letter, basically the same letter he's been writing since SCOE began its unnecessary oversight of SEUSD. And it's telling that even though SEUSD's finances are amongst the strongest of any school district in the county, he has not subjected any of those districts to the same oversight. Amongst Oak Grove, San Juan, Folsom-Curdova, and Sac City Unified, for example, which do you think is the only district who's run a surplus every year since 2018? Sac City is the only one. Here's what Dave Gordon wrote in April 18th of 2022, two weeks after the strike settled. He said, "The agreement and penalties will result in a $16.1 million structural deficit and reduce the district's unrestricted general fund balance to $27.8 million in 2023-24. On this basis, we are changing the district's certification to negative." Just as predictably, Dave Gordon was embarrassingly wrong again, $108 million wrong. SEUSD's unrestricted general fund balance, as we start the 2023-24 school year, is $136 million, even after Aguilar's $47 million penalty. Gordon's recent communications suggest that SCOE intends to extend its oversight into our district this year. Voters have elected this school board to direct the district, not Dave Gordon and SCOE. SCOE and its expensive consultants sat side by side with Superintendent Aguilar through all the wildly inaccurate budget projections, the missing five schools, the purchase of $6 million useless air filters, unnecessary layoffs, and wage freezes. Well, all the while Superintendent Aguilar got raise after raise. They were there for the demands of $10,000 pay cuts to teachers in the middle of a teacher shortage. They were there for two strikes, and the decision to walk away from the table regarding the makeup instructional days. Dave Gordon and his fiscal advisor were there every step of the way, as thousands of our students went to class day after day without a permanent teacher in the classroom. Perhaps more than anyone, Mr. Gordon repeatedly gave the previous Superintendent Aguilar cover, as he ran our district into the ground, all the while continuing to charge our district in excess of $250,000 per year for his part-time fiscal advisor. In Dave Gordon's view, stability was a higher value than competency, which is a convenient position for an unelected bureaucrat to take when he's on the outside looking in. Lacking in Mr. Gordon's worldview is a real-world problem. How do you recruit and retain certificated staff when you have hundreds of vacancies by demanding pay cuts and fostering labor conflict? Five years and over $1 million later, SEUSD has nothing to show for SCOE's inappropriate meddling into SEUSD's finances. Let's put an end to this time-consuming and wasteful distraction. We encourage this board to make every possible effort to unyoke the district from the failed oversight of Dave Gordon and SCOE. Look, this doesn't have to be our district's story. You don't have to cut our schools to the bone, as SCOE recommends. You don't have to ship students across our school district every day, away from their home schools, or force them to try and learn third-grade curriculum from a teacher who's trying to simultaneously teach second grade and third grade at the same time. We need to have a growth mindset. If we have some classes that are slightly smaller than the maximum number of students that could possibly be crammed into the room, that's a good thing, and that leaves us room to recruit new students, and allows our students to stay in their neighborhood schools, so that we can give them the best education that we can and that they deserve. So thank you for your time tonight, and please give this a lot of thought.
Thank you so much. Now we're going to SEIU. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rhodes, board members, associate interim superintendent Lisa Allen. My first time seeing you tonight. So tonight, I'm here clearly on behalf of our bargaining union, SEIU. I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight, SCTA on our behalf as well. I do want to thank the board. We have been bargaining with the district team the last week and a half. We were able to squeeze in some times and dates this past week, but know that we're still bargaining, so we have not come to an agreement. You've all heard everyone's stories, parents, staff members. How can we serve our students with shortages of teachers, with shortages of classified staff members, people in the class, staff, bus drivers? How are we gonna concap these students without the bus drivers? I know that this past spring, the agreement came for bus drivers. Thank you very much, everyone who worked on that. However, there hasn't been too much of a change. We still are short bus drivers. And how are those students, who our classes are collapsing, going to get moved, transported, when there's still a shortage? I have come to believe, I'm so sorry, that Mr. Aguilar came to this district to implode it from within, to take this district, send families away, and, I'm not sure, but leave a shell of a district, leave this district in shambles. And we're filling it. We're filling it now. I truly don't miss Mr. Aguilar. I just don't. But I'm glad that this new board and current board members that are standing here still are here and are willing to continue and move forward and grow and make changes. I do expect that to happen, and it's not gonna happen tonight, we know that, but hopefully it will happen, and it's gonna take that time this next year, next year and a half, for all of that to happen. But please know that without classified staff, we can't have teachers teaching or supporting them. That's, we're here to support them. They're here to teach our students. You're here to support us. We're here to support you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. Do we have TCS in the building? Teamsters or UPE? Okay, so we're going to, going once, going twice. Okay, we're gonna move on to 8.2, our district advisory committees, student advisory council. Next meeting, okay. The CAC. Okay, District English Learner Advisory Committee. LCAP. LCAP. Okay. BAAAAB. BAAAAB. All right. We got one. We got one.
Hello, everyone. I am Nikisha Thomas. I am the secretary for the BAAAAB. This is my son, Govinda Thomas Carter. He is a fourth grader at Carolyn Wenzel.
Hello.
All right. Okay, we have Malachi and Terrence as well, our parliamentarian and our chair. Okay, so as you guys may already know, the Black African American Advisory Board is tasked with advising the district on relevant policies and resources related directly to the impact of black students. We are also tasked with ensuring that you guys ultimately implement and then show progress towards our 13 recommendations. We had our first board meeting on the 13th of this month. We will be having our district, oh, I'm sorry, our two committee meetings, so the family and parent engagement meeting, in addition to the district's meeting, or the district accountability meeting. The parent engagement committee is, their role is to essentially encourage engagement with black parents. The district accountability committee is primarily focused on ensuring way, or figuring out ways to kind of monitor you guys' progress in terms of monitoring the, or implementing the recommendations. We just, we just approved of our budget for the year. We are, everyone agreed with what it was. I think that's what I have. Am I forgetting anything?
I'm good.
Come on, Malachi.
They already know me.
Okay. Again, I'm Malachi Smith. I'm the parliamentarian, and I'm the only grandparent on the executive committee, so I have an eight-year-old grandson that's going to Pony Express. So I'm just trying to make sure he has the best pathway for his educational needs. So I want to thank you for hearing what we have to say to you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. She's got taken away. All right. We're gonna actually go to item 9.1, and for my past program folks, this is one that you will probably be very interested in. So we're gonna turn it over to Board Member Jean.
So I am very, very, very excited tonight. I'm introducing my first resolution as a board member, and this topic has been very dear to my educational advocacy for the last five years at the state and national level. And when I decided to run for school board here, it's because I wanted to bring that advocacy work to our local school district. On the one hand, the title of community schools is very self-explanatory. It's about the school and the community working together for student success. On the other hand, developing an effective community school is really no simple task, and it requires commitment from all stakeholders to succeed. I want to start with the question, what are community schools? So that everyone's very clear. Community schools are a model for how our education system can work. They have the potential to transform our system, the system that we have heard tonight about so many issues we're facing. Because learning does not happen in isolation, community schools focus on what students in the community truly need to succeed. They focus on meeting the needs of the whole child, removing barriers to learning, addressing the larger issues facing students and the school, aligning partners to provide solutions, and creating a home away from home for our students and for our community. They can take many, many forms. There is no one-size-fits-all, but what makes them similar is that they meet the unique needs of their students and their communities in their own way, using the model we're presenting in our resolution to help them do it. Community schools are not a new concept. I know that aspects of community schooling have been prevalent in SEUSD schools for many, many years, but they really are newly energized with the development of this specific model that California has committed over $4 billion to, and even President Biden is beginning to do more and more funding at the federal government level. The model uses strategies that are research-based and are proven successful. It includes a clear structure and process to involve all stakeholders in conversations and decisions for the students and the school. To put this resolution together, I researched resolutions that have been passed throughout, by school districts throughout California. I looked at sample language provided by the National Education Association and the California Teachers Association, because my union roots are always strong. I reviewed the California Department of Education Resources on community schools. I also worked to ensure that the language was in line with the MOU that we signed in August between SCTA and SEUSD, and I had productive and collaborative meetings with our staff to confirm that the language is in line with the work we are doing this year on community schools. I didn't want to read the whole resolution into the minutes, just because, but I really hope you take time to read it. I know we have three resolutions and a lot of work to do. But it's meant to be very simple, easy-to-access language, and so I'd like to review specific parts of it that could be helpful to pay attention to. When you look at all of the wheresses, they state the goals of community schools that you've heard me kind of already talk about, and they state the realities that our district faces in implementing a successful educational system that we are anticipating community schools will transform. The last wheress lists the 18 SEUSD schools that have received the community school grant from the state of California. I'm going to read those 18 schools out, because if you hear your school, we need you. We need you to participate at the school site as a community, as parents. We need you to take surveys. We need you to consider being a part of the committees, because it's about the community and the school coming together. So these are the 18 schools. Abraham Lincoln Elementary, Cesar Eschavez Intermediate Elementary, Earl Warren Elementary, Edward Kimball Elementary, Ethel I Baker Elementary, Ethel Phillips Elementary, Fern Bacon Middle, Hiram Johnson High, John Bidwell Elementary, John D. Sloate Elementary, John Still TK8, Luther Burbank High, Oak Ridge Elementary, Pacific Elementary, Parkway Elementary, Rosa Parks K8, Willsey Wood Middle, and Woodbine Elementary. These 18 schools have funding from the government to help us do this. They've already started engaging in the pillars that make community schools work, but it's about bringing it all together and showing our collective commitment to it. When you start reading the therefore be resolved, they are demonstrating our school board's commitment to community schools. So I am bringing this forward to the seven of us, hoping that we will demonstrate our commitment that has already been demonstrated by SCTA and SEUSD in signing the MOU. The first be it resolved demonstrates what the pillars of community schools are, both those established by the Department of Education in California and the National Education Association, who has been working on this for years and years. I want to read the second be it further resolved, because it's gonna make very clear how much we need you to be successful in this endeavor. SEUSD defines a community school as a school that achieves success by implementing the above pillars through the following mechanisms. We have a new job at all 18 schools, a community school's training specialist. There will be an implementation team that includes school community stakeholders that represent the diversity and cultural composition of the community that each school serves. We need you. We will conduct an annual asset and needs assessment of and by both the school, so everybody that works at the school and goes to the school, and the community. We need you to be a part of that survey. The team will then put together a strategic plan that results in the creation of problem-solving dedicated to continuous improvement. And we will engage partners who bring their assets and expertise to help us implement the building blocks of these plans and these community schools. This language is exactly what was in the MOU, so we already have collaborated with our staff to start making this come together. And I know that moving it forward takes more time than everybody likes, but we are committed to making this happen. The next be it further resolved mentions that the district needs to have its own committee to be able to support all of the school site committees. And the last one recognizes that we need resources to make this happen. The resources currently coming from the state, as well as collaborating with the county, the city, and the state, and the federal government to succeed, to successfully implement this for our students. My goal with the resolution was to create a document that clearly details the why and the what of community schools in our school district, so that our students, our educators, and our community have collective understanding. In essence, when somebody goes, "What's community schools?", I really hope you can pull out the resolution and be like, "Hey, check this out. What you need to know is right here for you." I was absolutely thrilled to be in the room with some SCTA folk when it was announced that we had an MOU, and that both SCTA and SEUSD demonstrated their commitment to community schools through that, and I am excited to now ask that our Board of Education demonstrate our commitment by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go into my colleagues, do we have any public comment on the topic?
We have one. Valerie Williams Crawford.
All right. Valerie. Going once, Valerie. Going twice. Valerie's not here. To my colleagues, first up, Member Pritchett.
Thank you. And thank you, Member Jean, for bringing this and your hard work on this. I know this took a lot of your time. I do have a quick question for you. In terms of the last "Be It Resolved," I'm wondering if we should add the city of Rancho Cudavah to this, since Abraham Lincoln is within the city of Rancho Cudavah. So can I ask a friendly amendment to have that added?
Jaclyn, would that be okay? Yeah, okay. Yeah, it sounds great. Thank you. And thank you for having that knowledge. I did not.
Absolutely. Was I the only person?
No, no. We have one more. You're on there again, though, so did you mean to do that?
What's that?
You're on there twice.
Oh, no.
Okay. Member Kayata?
So thank you, Member Jean, for bringing this. I know you and I have talked, I wouldn't say extensively, but multiple times about community schools. There was a public comment earlier about how to make these function. The community needs to know what they are and how they can be involved. They were polite as to not say that I was one of the parents who said that. I have trouble understanding what they are, because when you read it, you understand. And then when you take a step back and think about it, well, I will say for myself, that just all seems natural. That's what a school should be doing anyway. So how is that different than a regular school? I appreciate you putting it in this resolution that we can commit to and look back on and remind ourselves of the work we're doing, and to call for community partnership, to recognize that this does require different funding, and this does require an extra above-the-board commitment. So very happy to be joining with hopefully everyone here tonight in passing this, and definitely second that amendment to add the city of Rancho Cudavah on there as well.
Thank you, Member Kayata. We have Member Jean.
As we're making amendments, as I, the English teacher in me, I was rereading it today. And then the first whereas, it says a "they," that's kind of a hanging pronoun. And I would like to change it to either students or SCUSD youth, whichever our preference is. So it would read, the Sacramento City Unified School District is, the central goal of the district is to develop the whole child so that students emerge from their TK-12 schooling, rather than just "they." We don't know who they are. So I'm proposing adding students as we add the city of Rancho Cudavah in the first whereas.
Member Pritchett, you are there again?
I'm not.
Nothing?
It's not shutting off.
No, it's no problem. I just don't know. I just want to make sure I call you if you're on here. Member Villa.
I just want to say thank you, because I really appreciate your insight, and you bring something to this board that, you know, we obviously haven't had before. So this kind of work is really good for my brain to digest, because the way you look at things is obviously different from me. So I just want to say thank you for taking the time to do this, because this is helpful for our community, for our parents, for educators, but for this board and future boards. So thank you.
Okay. Member Villa, you're here again.
I think it's.
Okay.
I think all of our.
We'll just say that Member Pritchett and Member Villa's thing is broken, and that's why they keep on showing up three times. Going, seeing that we have no other comments from my, our colleagues, Member Jean, would you like to move it forward?
I will gladly move this resolution.
And I'll second it.
Thank you.
And we have a second. We're going to take a roll called Vote. Yes, yes. Guys, can I? I can talk. Come on, guys. Okay, yeah. So, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. And to our, and to our families that were here earlier, I hope that gives you guys clarity that the board has been thinking about these things and wants you to be involved. Thank you once again. Now going to item nine point two. Who is yours?
Good evening, Board. President Rhodes, Superintendent Allen, members of the Board. My name is Jaclyn Garner. I serve as Executive Director, Student Support and Health Services. It's my honor tonight to be here to present Resolution Number 3345 in recognition of September as National Suicide Prevention Month. With this resolution, we recognize that suicide is a public health issue that continues to impact all individuals, youth, adults, families, and communities. In the last decade, the number of, sorry, let me start. In the last decade, the number of suicide risk assessments completed annually with students by our Student Support and Health Services Department staff has increased by 464%, demonstrating both the need for resolutions of this kind and the hope that comes from knowing that we can save our students' lives when we give them safe spaces to talk with trained adults. We know that suicide is preventable. With this resolution, we recognize that the week of September 10th to the 16th of 2023 is National Suicide Prevention Week. September 2023 is National Recovery Month, when families of people, or millions of people around the world, join their voices to share a message of hope and healing. Whereas these observances, I'm really stumbling today. Where these observances are united in raising awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover to live healthy and fulfilling lives. Whereas the most recent 2023 SCUSD California Healthy Kids Survey students indicated that 38% of our students reported feeling chronic sadness, and 17% reported seriously considering suicide in the past 12 months. And whereas the SAC City Unified School District Student Support and Health Services Team is dedicated to promoting and providing suicide prevention awareness, education, and interventions designed to build resiliency, create safety, and find hope. Whereas SAC City Unified School District has taken a number of steps to support our students, staff, and families' mental health and well-being, including adopting an evidence-based suicide prevention training program, CAGMETO, that all staff complete annually, providing all SAC City Unified School District community access to CARESOLIS, a resource that provides navigation and linkage to community-based mental health and substance abuse treatment, and significantly expanding our school-based mental health support staffing to all schools in order to increase access to early identification and interventions. We all have a role to play in preventing suicide. In recognition of that, I also want to take this moment to recognize and thank all of our district staff and community partners who complete our district's suicide prevention and awareness training, and who refer students they are concerned is at risk of suicide to ensure that they are connected to supports. I also want to recognize and thank the collaborative partnerships with the academic, communication, college, and career readiness, our face, human resources, and special education departments for helping to support put systems in place to increase mental health awareness and knowledge. And I want to recognize and thank our Student Support and Health Services staff, the school social workers, our school nurses, and other support staff who show up every day, who conduct safety assessments, and provide other interventions and supports in order to prevent the crisis of suicide. So now, "Therefore Be It Resolved," that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education proclaimed the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month. And "Be It Further Resolved," that Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education encourage all members of our school community to actively participate in suicide prevention month initiatives, and join us in our commitment to promoting mental health and preventing suicide. So we respectively ask that the board pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this topic? We do not. Okay. We're going to go to my colleagues. Member Segura.
I just want to say that this resolution, I really appreciate it from a student perspective. I know all of us, or a lot of us, are, I guess, weakened, weakened by the amount of resources that are lacking in our district towards mental health resources. We have numbers posted on the backs of our ID cards and numbers posted around the schools, but without, but besides those, there aren't many direct things that we can go to when we need that support. So bringing topics like this up is a really strong step in the right direction to strengthening those resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of my other colleagues? Seeing none. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Student preferential?
Aye.
Superintendent?
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a nice one.
Okay. Moving to item nine point three. This will be presented by Vice President Phillips.
Good evening, Sacramento. I am tonight presenting Resolution Number 3346 in recognition of the National Hispanic Heritage Month. In saying so, because there's always history behind everything, I want to, I guess, put a couple points before I read the resolution. And this is to my Latino and Latinx family. This is regarding the use of the word Hispanic within this document. The word Hispanic, I have found, even though it's used in this particular recognition, is tied to U.S. Census data. And it comes across as not being completely inclusive, because I, I do have an awareness that the information that I gathered for this refers to you as Hispanic. And I want to talk a little bit about the erasure of a people with regard to the word Hispanic. I do realize it's not the best name, the best identifier to use, but that is currently what exists in the American census. And that, as far as I have found, is unfortunately, it's a description that intentionally forces the narrative of Americanness, of folks from Spanish-speaking countries and nations who continue to suffer from racism that has denied them employment, education, and many freedoms generally related to the American dream. So within this resolution, there is a recognition that we are using the words Latino and Latinx when we are referring to our staff, our family, our community members. But when language is tied to census data, we will use the word Hispanic. This is a federally recognized month for Hispanic heritage, but I wanted to give a little history on the census before we begin. It does start with the term Negro, which dates back five centuries. That particular word was used to describe the color of folks in sub-Saharan Africa. Makes sense. It did come to America via slavery, survived Reconstruction, and the Jim Crow era, and finally lost favor during the Civil Rights and Black Power movements of the 1960s. 1960s. So a couple of dates that I, I'm referring to with regard to the U.S. Census is how we started and how we found a way to erase a population of people who are closely related to the growth of this nation. So in 1790, we had the first U.S. Census, had three racial categories: free white, all other free persons, and slaves. Progress, 1900, the term Negro first appeared to identify people of African descent. Further progress, 1910, the census added a data item called Color and Race. They only allowed for notations for mulatto and other, with instructions to write in race, where B was called black, which included all persons who were evidently full-blooded Negroes only, and the term mulatto included all other persons having some proportion or perceptible trace of Negro blood. What I'm missing here is America not counting our brothers and sisters from Spanish-speaking nations. So we can go all the way through the one-drop rule in 1930. We can skip to 1930. Sorry. That was actually, yeah. In 1930, the census actually made an attempt to obtain figures for people identified as Mex or Mexicans. These people were defined as all persons born in Mexico or having parents born in Mexico who were not definitely white, Negro, Indian, Chinese, or Japanese. In 1940, the American government eliminated Mex for Mexican from our census, and Mexicans were listed, were to be listed as white unless they were definitely Indian or some race other than white. That is erasure. 1950, maybe America thought they were getting it back on track. They added white. They added Negro. They added American Indian, Japanese, Chinese, Filipino. However, there were no black, because we're still mentioned as Negro, and everyone of Latin descent was referred to as white. 1960 census did almost the same, but they did include Puerto Ricans, Mexicans, or other persons of Latin descent, but they marked them as white based on the observation of the census taker. 1970, white, Negro, black, Indian, Latin descent, still labeled as white. This is erasure. 1980, little bit of change. We asked a question instead of identifying people with a checkbox. Is this person? That's the question it leads with. And we added Vietnamese, Asian Indian, Guamanian, Samoan, Eskimo, Alute. But they changed the order from Negro or black to black to Negro, still labeling persons of Latin descent as white. I guess we got our heads together a little bit. 2000, it was extraordinarily slow change, but now respondents were allowed to pick more than one race for the first time. This is 2000. Black or Negro became black, black African-American or Negro marked the first appearance of actually having African-American in the census. That is the year 2000 A.D. In 2010, we found a way to include folks with Hispanic origin in our data, and that was by having folks answer two questions. They had to answer if they were of Hispanic origin, and then they answered about race. And we know, and I'm sure a lot of other people understand, Hispanic is an offensive word just similar to being called Negro in today's society. That is not who we are. We are a people. So I wanted to address that to make sure that you have an understanding, or everyone has an understanding, that the continuation of the erasure of ethnic folks is not okay. But in reading this, I'm, I'm very, very proud to present this Resolution 3346 for the National Hispanic Heritage Month. So again, there was no change to that, because that's the government word. This is America's word. So let us begin. Whereas, the Sacramento City Unified School District takes great pride in joining citizens throughout the country in recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month, which honors the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the first national recognition of Hispanic, sorry, Hispanic heritage began with an observation of one week in 1968, and was enacted into law on August 17, 1988, on the approval of Public Law 100-402 to cover a 30-day span beginning on September 15. Whereas... Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the first national recognition of Hispanic, sorry, Hispanic heritage began with an observation of one week in 1968 and was enacted into law on August 17, 1988 on the approval of Public Law 100-402 to cover a 30-day span beginning on September 15. Whereas, the 2023 theme for National Hispanic Heritage Month is Latinos Driving Prosperity, Power, and Progress in America, which recognizes the significant strides of Latino and Latinx persons in the economic, political, and social growth of the US with the introduction of two powerful concepts of Flip the Script and Asset Values Framing, geared to challenge negative stereotypes and biases about Latino and Latinx persons, promoting a more inclusive and positive narrative that reflects the strength and resilience of these communities. Additionally, the concept of Asset Values Framing allows a shift in the focus from deficits to strengths, highlighting the positive contributions of Latino and Latinx persons to society. And whereas Sacramento City Unified School District serves more than 16,000 Latino and Latinx students, or about 41% of the student population, y'all are us. And whereas, 250 students have received the Spanish Language Seal of Biliteracy through the Multilingual Literacy Department in Sacramento City Unified in the 2223 school year. And whereas, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the positive influences Latino and Latinx persons have on our country, our state, our communities, and our district, which support their progress, enrich their culture, and celebrates the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of Latino and Latinx communities. So be it further resolved that appropriate classroom activities take place that illustrate the value, role, and contributions of Latino and Latinx persons to the local and national economies, culture, and identity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified Board of Education declares September 15 through October 15, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing the contributions of local Latino and Latinx leaders, district staff, students, and their families. Thank you. Don't clap.
Thank you so much. We're going to go to our audience. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right. To my colleagues, do we have any board comment? Uh, Member Singh.
First of all, I want to recognize, I think it's important to get all the information, so I just appreciate you giving us that at the beginning, and I, I think I, it's not something I prepared. But thinking about the, oftentimes we talk about immigrant communities, we just focus on the struggle. We talk about, use words like resilience, overcoming, you know, working hard, but in reality, everybody who comes to this country deserves to have an equal right and an equal opportunity at making a life for themselves. And I think recognizing that our district is over 40% students who are of Latinx, Hispanic, Latino heritage, that we continue our dedication to these students. And I really want to recognize the amount of parents and families that show up at the first of the month and the third of the month into this space, speak their mother tongue, speak in Spanish to us, and give us the time that we need to use a translator, although my Spanish is really shaky. I will continue to make improvements on that, but you advocate. You advocate, and our job up here is to continue to make the changes that are necessary so that one day we can move away from those words, we can talk more about being part of an equal framework in this country. So I just want to thank all of you, the community members, the students. We recognize you, we see you, and just know that, I think I can say this on behalf of this board, that we are dedicated to your success, and we wish you the best this month. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Singh. Do we have any other of my colleagues who would like to hop in? Seeing none, we, do we have a motion to move it forward? Okay. Second from Member Singh. Student preferential.
Aye.
All right. Superintendent.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Coyote.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett. Oh, sorry. Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Motion passes with only Member Pritchett, not a superintendent. Okay. Uh, we're going to go to item 10.1. Mr. Browning.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent, I'm here for a quick public hearing on a consent agenda item. So in accordance with Public Education Code Article 15, we are required to allow the public an opportunity to comment anytime the district intends to grant easement or dedicate real property to another public entity. In this case, we're talking about a sidewalk easement for the County of Sacramento at Etheli Baker located at 5717 Lorraine Way. This easement is in order to improve the walkability and the safe routes to schools within that neighborhood. This time, we'd like to hold the public hearing and receive any public comments. This is not a board action item. Resolution will be voted on tonight in the consent agenda. I believe it's item 13.1F. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment around this topic?
We do not.
Do we have any of my colleagues comment around this topic? Seeing none. We will go to the next item. Thank you so much. All right. So now we're going to go into our presentations for superintendent search forms, I mean firms, sorry about that. And we have three different groups coming up today. We have Leadership and Associates, Alma, and McPherson, and Jacobs. So first we'll have Alma come up and present to the board and community. Thank you so much. Floor is yours.
Let's see. Do we have a PowerPoint? There it is. Thank you so much, President Rhodes and members of the board for having us today. My name is Sylvia Flowers, and I am the Managing Director of our Executive Search and Talent Acquisition Practice at Alma Advisory Group. And I'm happy to share a little bit about our proposal and our process today. So first, I want to share that Alma Advisory Group was founded by Monica Santana Rosen, who was our CEO in 2016. And our mission is really to cultivate the conditions where people and organizations can do their best work on behalf of the students that they serve. Here you'll see a team, a snapshot of our team that would be dedicated to this search. We represent over 150 years of experience in public education in urban school districts across the country. For this search, I would be the lead for the superintendent search. Najah Thompson is one of our recruiters, and he spends the majority of his time sourcing and recruiting candidates for our executive search practice. Venus Velez hails from New York City. She is typically a member of our community engagement team and supports us with community engagement, both on the front end and when we get to the finalist interview round. Nita Lasapunkel is our data analyst. She helps us analyze all of the data that we receive, both on the front end and on the, in the finalist interview round from community input. Janay Harley and Mindy Schlegel are usually part of our interview teams and support us with first-round interviews and candidate communication. So what you can expect from Alma is we want to partner with you to really seek out authentic community engagement and transparency. We believe that all voices are important in our search process, and that is something that we want to commit to from the very beginning. We want to spend time talking to the community, talking to your advisory councils, talking to students, talking to your collective bargaining leadership, staff, as well as students, to hear what's most important in this role. We also bring a focus on an anti-racist hiring process and developing a search process with you that mitigates bias every step of the way. We will incorporate performance-based and behavioral interviews for each stage of the selection process, and really, we want to be your trusted advisor and facilitator of your shared decision-making process. Here's our proposed search timeline. We would be honored to support, to begin this process as soon as possible. We've projected that November is when we would be able to start, and that work begins with stakeholder input. As I mentioned, we want to spend time getting to know the community. All of that work helps us, helps inform the job profile and the key competencies for the role, and then that helps us to begin the outreach and sourcing and recruitment for the, for the position. We anticipate that recruitment, active recruitment will occur, will occur throughout the month of December, and that first, second, and finalist round interviews would occur between January to March, so that the board is ready to extend an offer likely in the March-April timeframe. A typical Alma search takes about, we project, 16 weeks from start to finish, and recognizing that holidays may impact scheduling, but generally, that's the timeframe that we're focused on. When we think about the role of our firm and the role of the board, again, we want to serve as a critical friend and a, and a trusted advisor for you. We have a very collaborative approach, and we really want, as we mentioned, as I mentioned at the beginning, we want to help the board do their best work in this process because we know this is one of the most critical decisions and most important responsibilities for the board. So our firm sees that our role is really to engage the community, to clarify what's most important, those requirements and competencies for, that the community is seeking in their next superintendent. We want to be a strong recruiter, searching for candidates who may be looking for a role and who may not be looking for a superintendency. We're also dedicated to designing an equitable, transparent, and rigorous hiring process and select, selection process, and we take great care in engaging the candidates throughout the, throughout the search process. We want to provide clear information to them, making sure that they understand the process and that they are kept aware of what's happening at every stage. And then lastly, we want to facilitate and guide the board in their decision-making process, taking the input from all of the participants in the interview process and sharing that feedback with you as you deliberate. We know that this process will give you a lot of information about your candidates, and we believe that that information helps to transition your next person into the role and gives you a baseline of information on a candidate's strengths, as well as growth opportunities that will inform their onboarding. The board is really helpful in helping us identify who we need to talk to in the community, helping us determine who, where we can go in the community, helping us identify community partners, organizations, leaders, students, staff, and other stakeholders that we need to talk to in this process. You will help us to communicate about the search, making sure that we're providing information to the community about where we are in the process, and that we're making sure that information is accessible to the public at every step, step of the way. We would also, of course, want to partner with you to engage the media and share information with the media about this process. And then, of course, we are co-creating this process with you. We are advising you in all aspects of the design, interview, and selection process for your candidates. I'm going to go really quickly through this because I only have two minutes, but the first, the next part of our process is around candidate identification and recruitment. We will design a competency-driven process. All of our selection goes back to those competencies, and we seek out candidates who we believe are aligned to those competencies. We also have that commitment to mitigating bias. Anyone who is a part of our interview process does go through our anti-bias training. We have found that when we focus on the competencies, we see that more leaders of color and women tend to advance in our process because we are focused on the skills and the experiences first, and we are leaving as, leaving out as much subjectivity and subjective criteria in our processes. So as you will see from our data finalists that have been presented by our firm have been majority persons of color, and we have also seen our final selected candidates be majority persons of color and about 50% female candidates. Again, community engagement and transparency are a key component of our process. We want to spend time with surveys, putting a community survey out for you, doing community listening sessions in the evening, as well as doing focus groups, both virtually and in, in person. And why do we want to work with you? Obviously, this city has a rich history and a rich legacy as one of the oldest K-12 districts in the United States. We see that there is a lot of community involvement and engagement in this district, and that aligns very closely with our foundational work of engaging the community in this process. And we're just really interested in partnering with you and expanding our support to, to your district.
Thank you so much. And we're going to hear from the other two before we have any public comment or board questions. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're going to go to, next we're going to do leadership. Next, we're going to do leadership and Leadership Associates.
Could you please queue up the PowerPoint for us?
I, I don't do that, but somebody will.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Allen, staff, and community members. We really appreciate the opportunity to present our search process plan, and we welcome some of the questions that you may have. So you're probably going to see four people here and only three in front of you, and I'll explain that in a minute by way of our introductions. My name is Jackie Horish, and I've been a superintendent for nine years in Union School District in San Jose. I'm going to introduce our missing member, who's Blanca Cavazos, who was a former superintendent at Taft Union High School District. And some of the members of your staff and possibly some of you are familiar with Blanca and possibly myself, because Blanca worked on the Chief Academic Officer this past year, as well as your Executive Director on LCAP with Leadership Associates, she and one of our other colleagues. And I'm currently working with her on the Chief Information Officer. So I'm going to pass this over to another one of our colleagues, Donald, if you'd introduce yourself.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. It's an honor to be here. I'm Donald Evans. I was the-
Donald, really quickly, you speak to the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
For the people at home. We, we-
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. Truly an honor to be here. I'm the former superintendent of Berkeley Unified School District, Hayward. I've been a superintendent for 10 years, retired. Came back last year and did an interim superintendent for a year at Piedmont Unified School District. And so I'm actually the newbie on this staff, excited to be here and looking forward to getting the new UN. We're going to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Donald. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. David Verdugo here, retired superintendent from Paramount Unified School District. I spent 10 years there, school district of about 17,000 students in a very urban- I spent 10 years there, school district of about 17,000 students in a very urban, 98% free and reduced lunch. Also, the former executive director of CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents, based here in Sacramento. I spent six years there in that office. And lastly, for the two years as well, working out of Washington DC as the superintendent's Leadership Academy Director. I did that for two years, where I had the honor and the opportunity to mentor and coach aspiring superintendents across the nation. It was really quite special in that regard. And I've been a partner with Leadership Associates now for the last 10 years. I also have been the interim superintendent, as Donald mentioned, his opportunity, in Pasadena, in Westminster, as well as back to Paramount for the last two months. Thank you.
One of the things that I wanted to, you didn't notice about Leadership and Associates, is that working with us, we're one of the very few search firms that has an executive assistant that works directly with your executive assistant. There are so many things that's required, that you'll have to do as a board in hiring a new superintendent. So we have Serena, if we are selected, is an executive assistant. Serena actually was an executive assistant for a school district as well. And so some of the things that you'll have to do, excuse me, is that there's a lot of paperwork, requirements, templates. She would be working with your executive assistant in terms of those documents. We have online surveys. We have in-person interviews. Lots of people, stakeholders, business partners, anyone that you would want us to talk to as we're doing this search. We provide 24-hour communications on-call, whenever you need us, we're there. And most of this thing, most of the things that we're talking about, they're in your documents, so we just decided not to go over them and try to be as brief as we can.
If I may, I was going to mention how important that is to Joette, your executive assistant that will provide her a tremendous amount of support as you go through this process. This next slide really displays our extended reach, which has been really a contributing factor to accomplishment, accomplishing, I'm sorry, 90% of the searches this past year, we have had the honor of accomplishing throughout the entire state. And in terms of, something that I'd like to mention is that we don't consider ourselves consultants, we consider ourselves partners. We have a vested interest in Leadership Associates. And in addition, every two weeks, our entire team of partners goes on Zoom, where we will actually begin to utilize each and every one of these people that you see across that geographic map, providing assistance to this process. So it's not just the team of four that you will see in front of you, but rather, an extended group as well.
So I think you'll see, as you, and probably have already seen, as you've reviewed the proposals, there are a lot of similarities between the search firms. I have to tell you, though, that there's a real reason why Leadership Associates is the premier search term, firm in California. So I'm going to real quickly try to walk you through the process while I try to highlight what differentiates us, why do people hire us, what, why do they have the confidence that they do? First and foremost, you'll see in this circle, it starts and ends with you. It is your search. We work with you, we have an initial meeting with you that we'll schedule, and you're, you have to click it, oh, sorry. You're the one who's going to tell us everything that we need to know to help you plan the search, from the timeline to the process that you want to go through. Which stakeholders do you want us to meet with? How many groups do you want us to do phone calls? Do you want us to do Zoom? Are you interested in a community advisory meeting, panel? Would you like to do site visits? It's all up to you. You plan it, no surprises. We work with you at that initial meeting, so you know everything that's going to happen throughout the process, and we also communicate with you on a regular basis while we're through it. The next part is, as you've heard before, really important to do these extensive interviews with those stakeholders, your community partners, however many you want us to talk to. If you want us to talk to one-on-one with, you know, the mayor, we're happy to do that. If you want us to do a Zoom with a particular group of people, we'll do that. We come to your district, we meet with the folks that you want us to meet with in person. So it's your decision. One of the other things I want to tell you, though, is that once we do all of that information, we put all the information together, we share it with you, we give you an executive summary, we do a web survey, we have that in a number of different languages. We usually get an enormous participation rate in that. So we get a lot of information about what people are looking for, we put it together in the executive summary and the position description, which you will approve and help us draft. After that, we do an extensive recruitment and campaign outreach. We have a very robust website, and it's the go-to place. If somebody wants to be a superintendent in California, they know Leadership Associates, I guarantee you. Also, it has a 1,100-degree subscrib, degree, 1,100-person subscription. We blast out every single one of our searches to these 1,100 people. So we're very well-known for recruiting, and we also, as David mentioned, every other week, we talk with each other, all of our partners throughout the state, and we say, hey, we're doing this search, here's what they're looking for, who do you know that you think might be a good candidate? So it's a really, I think, aggressive way of trying to make sure that we know what you're looking for, who do we know in our network that we can call on to help us tap those people on the shoulder? And then the last part is the presentation of the candidates. What we do is, you will have access to all the application materials for every person. We're, we're just talking today. We guess you'll probably get somewhere between 30 and 45 applicants. Not all of them are going to be a match for your district. What we do is, we do an extensive vetting. Of course, we take a look at the references, but we go off the page. We know people who know people, so we're going to be able to do that and present the candidates in the tiers for you. And I think I'm out of time.
Okay. And with about the 45 seconds left, I won't, go ahead, thank you, Donald. I won't bore you with all of those bulleted items, other than we believe our why is your why as well. We're dedicated to partnering with the school district, we strive every day to meet the diverse needs of California school districts. 66% of our finalists were selected, were women or candidates of color. We are a California-based, California-savvy, with a track record of over 650 searches. And again, we are partners, not hired consultants, and so we have a vested interest in the success of California schools accordingly. And just wanted to say thank you all so very, very much for your time and attention.
If you had any, you had any questions for us, we're here for you.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have the next group come up, and then afterwards, we'll do a public comment, I mean, public conversation, and then we'll call up our board. So hang tight, and we'll be right with you guys. Hello, this is McPherson, correct? It is. Wait, if we can wait for that, we'll start handing it out.
Thank you for the pins.
All right, all right. Well, good evening, and thank you so much for having us present to you this evening. We are so pleased to be considered by you for this honor to help, help and partner with you in the selection of your next superintendent. My name is Bill Hewitt, and I've been a consultant with McPherson and Jacobson since they first started in California 11 years ago. I've done 38 searches in California, and if you looked, many of them are from around the Sacramento area. Much, most of my career was in Elk Grove Unified School District, and my principalships were mostly in the city of Sacramento. Rutter Middle School, and I was the founding principal at Florin High School. And did a number of things of working with, years ago, with your staff, your superintendents, your assistant superintendents here. So we, I very much want to let you know that we have, both of us have a personal local knowledge of your school district, of your communities, of your families. We've worked directly with them. I've also been a superintendent for 16 years, and I was an interim in Dixon, in Lodi, and in Berkeley. You heard another consultant say he was from Berkeley, too. Donald came right after me. And then, in retirement, I've, which my wife says I failed, I have been an interim superintendent several times, and I also consult with districts, helping them with management and do a lot of board development workshops as well. My partner's AIDA, well-known, and I've done many searches with AIDA.
Again, thank you for having us, and I want to be totally transparent with the board. I worked at SAC City Unified from 2005 to 2007 as the administrator for child development. And most recently, I was a part-time individual who helped in the early learning and care department, assisting prior to the hiring of a director, and also in the implementation of transitional kindergarten. I no longer work as a consultant or temporarily with the district. So we wanted to be very transparent about that and let you know, yes, I know many people within the district. I have worked with parents and staff. I was a superintendent eight years ago, when I retired from Espada Unified School District. I worked with them for eight years. Prior to that, I was, I was here at SAC City, and I worked in Woodland for probably 20 years. I was a teacher, a vice principal when they had junior high schools, they were seven, eight, nine. And I was a principal in Rio Linda. I'm local, I'm from the area, so I think that's one of the pluses that we bring. I've also worked with McPherson and Jacobson for eight years, ever since my retirement, and have assisted in various searches and have been the lead on several searches, not only here in California, but elsewhere.
Steve Lauter is also the third consultant. He is the West Coast coordinator for McPherson and Jacobson, but his superintenances were largely in California, some in Oregon as well. So advancing slides, do we do that? Okay, all right, next slide. Okay, we want to talk about our firm just for a moment. We are a leading national search firm, but we have a network of consultants, 21 consultants from California. We're, obviously, we do all of our work in California, so it's kind of the best of both worlds, in our opinion. We do recruit candidates from outside the state with our network of 120 consultants across the United States. We are known for sustainability of leadership. We have our metrics that we hold at 80% of our superintendents are in the same position five years or more, and that's a metric that we have established and, and have maintained over the course of the history of this school district, we believe, over the course of this firm. We believe that's because of the process that we use and the engagement that we have with you and your stakeholders, which is what makes us unique. Tonight, given our limited amount of time, we won't go into all of our process, it's much the same as other, as other firms, especially the last firm, but there is, there are a couple of things that make us unique and different. And in saying that, I want to give my greatest respect to other California firms, they're all good. I want to tell you, any California firm that you hire, you know, they're my colleagues and my friends, and they do a very good job. But we have different aspects that, that may be a better match for you. So we're going to talk briefly here about what we do. We have five phases that we have with your candidates. The first phase is to establish criteria with you. We come in and spend quite a bit of time with you, we are your partners in this, and, but we serve you, we work for you. We need to know what are the characteristics and the criteria you're looking for, for a superintendent. And we set that right at the beginning, because that is what we use throughout the entire process. We keep going back to that criteria when we go ahead and select, recruit, and even choose the final candidate, when you choose your final cabinet, candidate. We establish a timeline for you. Most of our searches are four-month-long searches, but we can adjust that either longer or shorter, depending on your needs. We do the advertising. We are very complete in our stakeholder input meetings, and as you've heard before, we'll do Zoom, we do surveys, we'll go, we even went and got up at 7:00 in the morning, we asked one district, how can we get ahold of your parents? And they said, well, our mothers bring children to school at 7:00 in the morning. So every day during a week, we went out to the elementary schools, and we were there at 7:00 in the morning to talk to the mothers who were delivering their kids to school. We go the extra mile in engaging your stakeholders, and not only your parents, but your staff and your community, our community leaders, politicians, and people that contribute to your, to your district. And then, we have a great network of people that recruit high-quality candidates and vet them. And without going into a great deal with that, we have a database of nationwide, over 3,000 candidates. And in California, we've done a lot of searches together. We, we have many networks that we are attached to and engage in, and so, you know, you're hiring a firm that is well-connected, that will bring to you lots of high-quality candidates. Did you want to remark about that?
What I can say is that our firm is the only firm that was in partnership with CSBA.
Yep. Okay. Yes, CSBA chose this firm to be in partnership with, largely because of our connection to stakeholders, and that's what makes us very unique. We really believe in engaging your stakeholders at a higher and in, and in more involved level. One of the things that we highly recommend, if you don't want to do this, we can do it in a traditional way, but we highly recommend that you engage your stakeholders, not only at the front end of the process, where you're asking them what they're looking for and what the issues are that you want to address, but also actually in the selection process. You do the selection, you do all of the selection of who you're going to have, but we think it's of great value for candidates to also be interviewed by your stakeholders. And so most of the searches we do, we have panels of stakeholders that will interview the candidates, and they don't tell you who to select, that's your job, but they do tell you who the, who the candidates are, what their strengths are, and what the concerns they have in each candidate. We have found that very valuable. We do that in a confidential manner, and that is one of the things that sets us apart. There are a lot of districts around you that have used us, Elk Grove, Davis, Winters, West SAC, Natomas, ask them about that, they all use that type of process. And it makes, it is different, and it, it, what it does is it sets up you and your superintendent for success, because there's great buy-in in the end, since people have been engaged in that process. Do you want to say anything on that?
I think the only thing I want to end with is that, that process that Bill has described really does provide input to the board when you're sitting down trying to make that decision, because our job is to make your job more difficult, because we're going to bring you the best candidates that meet the criteria that you've established.
I want to say, in closing, that over the course of my career, this, this has been a very special district. It's a district that I worked right next door to for years and years. I worked in multicultural settings in both Elk Grove and here, and grew and learned from the multicultural relationships and settings and work that we've done, and it would be just a great honor to come back and to serve you and to find a great fit for your next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am. So what we're going to do now is open up a public comment, do we have any public comment on this, on these presenters?
We do. Terrence Gladney has signed up to speak.
Okay. Mr. Gladney, welcome.
Hello, buddy. I told him he was brave coming up here with all that Warriors garb on, but his mom is from San Francisco, so I can't blame him. I was, good evening, officially. I was, I was going to mention that in all these presentations, I didn't see anything about our most important people in this system, which is kids, but somewhat undermined by the last presentation, because they did have as a footnote that it's all- the last presentation because they did have as a footnote that it's all about the kids on pages four and five. And then I did see briefly on page 19, but in a 20-page presentation, three pages, maybe it's not all about kids. I would hope that you would look at this kind of like a job interview. I know in any job interview I've been to, I'm most successful when I do my homework. I did hear a lot of hypotheticals, but I didn't see anyone that had actively poured themselves into the actualities and outcomes in this system, right? So they say, we'll listen to you, but a lot of our data is publicly available. So I would just ask, how much is our system valued by any firm if they haven't done the pre-work to come before you as we as community members even have to do? I did not hear specifics about our realities of what has been. I would ask that in whatever you guys consider, you would look at the variance and the delta between what community members have said in previous superintendent searches and what has been the actual outcomes, but also the variances between what the candidates offered and who you guys ultimately selected or your predecessors. I know that previously we have asked as community members for someone local. We started Superintendent Banda, who was from Anaheim. Then we went to Superintendent Aguilar. So we got to Fresno. So maybe this time we at least get to Stockton. Maybe we get someone within our own borders or footprint. That would be great. I just think that this is a very important decision. I will hope that you ultimately remember that the decision is yours. But look at it in terms of humanity. I mean, there's a lot of kind of like glitz and glamour in the presentations, or maybe it wasn't. But ultimately, your decision, you guys have to be accountable to the kids at the school site. And to Board Member Rose, I heard you out at Cabrillo the other day. So I'm sorry that I missed you, but yeah, I hope you had a good workout. You guys have a good night.
We should talk about that, but yeah. No, it's funny. So, okay. So to my colleagues, there's two things we have. We have this as an information item that can move into action. We don't have to take action on a firm tonight through conversation, discussion. If we believe we came to a point to where we would like to take action, then somebody can make a motion for that. Obviously, we can move into that. But this does give us the flexibility to be able to have the conversation and then come back at another time and actually decide who we want to go with. So that's just for clarity for my colleagues and for the people in the audience. But I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any questions they might have. Oh, I'm seeing it. I'm just making sure. I was looking around. Member Singh.
I want to thank Terrence for speaking. I think it's good to get at least one public comment about the process that is so important. So Terrence brings up a really good point, and it would be great to kind of hear more from maybe all three of you about your understanding of some of the issues that this district has been through. We're working really hard here, staff, district, our interim superintendent, to really right some wrongs and get to a place where we can build the type of trust that we need to have a district that's truly dedicated to, as Terrence said, the students and the families that really trust us. And we need, I'll be honest, we're going to need someone who has the ability to navigate, as you all have said in your presentations, one of the most diverse school districts and one of the older school districts. So there are expectations. And I do want to know the specific question. How can you help us differentiate what someone says they'll do? And how can you actually figure out if they will actually do that? Because we've all interviewed for multiple jobs, and we know we can always come up with a great pitch. But how can you help us differentiate what's a pitch and what is the actual reality we're going to get with that individual?
Anyone feel free to come up and answer Member Singh's question.
Well, I'll take the first stab at it. First and foremost, we don't just rely on the pitch. You know, one of the things that I think really differentiates our company is, just as we mentioned before, we talk every other week. Many of the people in our firm have been doing it for 20 years. They know people who know people. We don't just listen to what somebody says. We do a really deep dive on their track record. You are going to need to find somebody who has a track record, who you can see what have they done in the past? How did they do it? What do the people who worked with them say about how that process went? So we really do a very, very thorough vetting. We go off the page. We know people who know people. We talk to everyone that we possibly can because we know how important it is to get somebody who knows what he or she is doing in your district. Because of all the, I want to say you've had some turmoil, you've had transitions, there have been issues that are very complex. So we really do, I think, a pretty deep dive so that we're not just listening to what somebody says, but we're actually really understanding, what have they done? David?
Yeah, I'd like to answer that question with what Leadership Associate's purpose is, if I may for a moment. We are a partnership of active California educational leaders, all former, very good superintendents, if I can put it that way. Kind of toot the horn a little bit there. But we're committed to improving the quality of education for all California students. We believe high-quality public education committed to providing an excellent and equitable education for all children is the foundation of our democratic society. That quality of leadership has a huge impact on the success of your staff and your students. That every student and staff member deserves a passionate, caring, inspired leader focused on ensuring that all children receive the highest education possible. That's the belief, and those are the core beliefs. I said earlier, our why is your why, and there's no doubt about that. But in addition, we value integrity, equity, excellence, diversity, inclusion, accountability, and transparency. So we believe that those core feelings and beliefs, to a degree, Mr. Singh, answer somewhat of the question. Are there complexities in this job as a superintendent? Absolutely. Certainly more than what I experienced, I can put it that way, 10 years ago. The culture and the landscape is quite different now. Thank you.
Okay. And then also, you know, we have a lot of people in the queue. So if people come to talk, I'm just asking you to keep it brief.
I'll go first. Okay, I think one of the things to really address the question that you have is, once you hire that superintendent, we come back to the board and work with the board and the superintendent and work on the goals and objectives that that superintendent, you want them to focus on for the first year. That's what you will use to evaluate the superintendent. So whatever those goals and objectives are, you'll be using that when you begin your evaluation process with that superintendent. So that's the first thing.
There were two parts that I heard to your question, Mr. Singh. And the first one was, what do you see as the major issues for the district? And from my standpoint, I see it, it's a matter of trust. There's a lot of healing that's going to, that needs to occur in your school district, and we need to find a leader who, yes, is a very good manager and has education, is in the forefront of everything that they do. But the people in your district need a leader who will embrace them, listen to them, and work with them to heal some of the past occurrences and past problems that this district has experienced and some of the trials and tribulations that you've been through that we're aware of. So how do we find that person was the second part of your question? And I think I go back to, that's a large part of our work to you, is that we have to bring the candidate forward in multiple venues, if you will. We talked a lot about, we want you to be able to see the candidates not only through your own lens, through your own eyes, that's very important, but also through the eyes of your teachers, the eyes of your students. We actually want the students to be involved in this selection process, the eyes of your classified staff, and the eyes of your teachers. And it's critical that a board really understand that when they're making their final decision. And you won't get that as robustly as you can unless we engage those entities in your school district throughout the entire process. So I think that goes a long way. And that's been our experience about why our superintendents last a long time, because the people that end up getting hired are not people, as you said, that say something in an interview and then behave differently. We take them through so much in front of you. In the interview process, it's not just sitting down and answering questions. We have a pre-interview process that we go through where they have to do a veto. We'd like them to get up and perform for you, actually to perform a board presentation for you during the day. We bring candidates in, only one or two candidates or three candidates a day, to be with you all day long. It's a very involved and deep process. And we also make sure that part of our process is social with you. This is something that came from our founder out of the business world, that all businesses, when they select a head executive, they want to know socially, am I going to get along with this person? And so we actually spend time, one-on-one or two-on-one, with you, with every candidate that you are in in the last phase, so that you get to know them a little bit socially. That's a part of the equation that most firms completely leave out, and we find it is very important. So again, to summarize, that's a, I mean, that's a critical question in my mind. How are we going to find somebody that we can work with and we can trust and can help us heal? And in my mind, it's because you have to find a firm that will bring candidates forward to you with being able to see it through several venues.
Thank you. I appreciate that. When we say brief, maybe we need to give people some maybe time limit? Sorry, nothing on you. I just realized that.
I mean, to be brief.
I said brief. Nobody's been brief.
So one thing that Board Member Singh asked about was, what do we know about this district? And so just in preparing for this conversation, we obviously read about the strike a couple of years ago. We looked at your board agenda and were pleasantly surprised, again, that your bargaining units have the opportunity to report out to you in each meeting, that you have these existing structures of advisory councils in place. These are groups that we want to talk to and learn more about their lived experience in this district, in addition to parents and students' lived experience in this district. It reminds me of the search that we did in Portland, Maine, where we worked very closely with their multilingual and multicultural department to bring families out to these community gatherings. And it was a beautiful, beautiful listening sessions where we had tables of Somali parents, tables of their East African parents, tables of their Latino communities, speaking in their own languages, telling us their lived experiences in Portland, Maine. We want to hear those stories. We want to leverage those stories and use them in the interview process. Those experiences that parents, staff, students have felt, how does that impact our selection process? How do we use that information to design the interview questions for our candidates? In an Alma process, we interview every candidate first. We do not bring you just a book of resumes. We have talked to every candidate. We have interviewed them using the same criteria. We use a competency-based interview process. We are looking for your actual experiences. What have you done? What have your outcomes been? What have you learned from your experiences? We don't want to hear presidential speeches either. What would you do? We want to hear, what have you done? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Member Singh? Perfect. We're going to go to Member Kayata.
First, I just wanted to clarify for people watching now or later on the recording. We did originally receive seven proposals, and the board in a previous open, I believe it was an open meeting, special meeting, we narrowed it down to these three, which were basically our top choices. And to me, what I'm looking for in a search firm is a firm that's competent enough to get the job done, but understands basically that this community and this board is making this election, and it's a partnership, but it's also a tool to get us to where we need to be. So that kind of, in my mind, brings a balance of buying what we need in terms of services, but not more than we need. And that's a question of cost to me. As a school district, it's really easy, and especially as a board, to get heavily focused on the role of our chief executive, our superintendent. This is a problem we see in the business world as well, is so much importance on one person, and it's like the checkbook just goes flowing. I want to spend as little money as I can to get the job done right, and really not a penny more because we need that money, even if it's only in, you know, the difference of $50,000. That's money that we can be spending on our kids. So that's just a blanket statement. And then I have three questions. I have one for each firm, but everyone is welcome to answer all of them, I suppose. For Leadership Associates, my question is, how many candidates typically make it through your process? And how do you do that winnowing down? For McPherson Jacobson, my question is, what are your thoughts and experiences on working with labor unions to make sure that a selection is something that they can work with for a superintendent? And for Alma, this statement was, previously was not targeted at you, but you are the highest price by double and triple the other two firms. What are we getting for that extra money?
Okay, so well, if you remember the question, can you go ahead and come up and answer Member Kayata's questions? And then we'll go in order for this questioning.
I will definitely start, and my colleagues can hopefully...
And we have two minutes time for that. You can start her time over, please.
You have all the information of all the candidates, I believe I said that. We present to you what we consider the tiers. We have tier one, tier two, tier three. The top tiers are those that meet the criteria that you have agreed on, or these, this is what your desired characteristics are. Tier two are the ones that almost match it, not quite. Tier three, we don't feel, are close enough of a match. You decide which of the candidates, you can pick a tier-two candidate that you want to interview. It doesn't make any difference to us, but we do definitely try to put them into tiers for you so that you can see, what do we find out about them, et cetera.
I was simply going to add that the cost factor that was mentioned is certainly extremely important under these times and conditions. But I would also add that the comprehensive vetting process that we utilize across the state, if not nationally, has been really the key to developing a tier-one list that we provide to you. This is your search from the beginning to the end. We're here to support you accordingly. But I believe sincerely, after 10 years of doing this work, that the vetting process that we utilize is extremely comprehensive, and whether or not that needs to be a financial assessment of what that person is and where they're at at this stage. But those characteristics, that position description that we would eventually mutually begin to create upon your approval is really critical because that's really the match and the fit that you're going to be seeking and searching for.
And I just wanted to add one thing. There was something that Board Member Singh said about a candidate. So we all have a process. And he talked about something that's said and how do you know about that and something that's not said. A successful candidate here that nobody's talked about is someone that can manage the politics of being in Sacramento. And the candidate we want for you is someone who can manage all of that because it's not only stakeholders here, but it's also the stakeholders at the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Please come up.
Yeah, it's an important part of the work that we do, is working with your unions. And oftentimes, to be honest, I know many searches, we have been chosen because unions see us as friendly and embracing and engaging with them. It's not only that we have a meeting with them and that we hear their concerns and then put it in writing and deliver it to you. It's that we engage them to help us really look at the candidates, to look at them in the interview process. Some districts like to have stakeholder panels of different, of teachers and classified and parents all working together. Some have multiple panels. But no matter what the case is, that point of view, we recommend be carried out through the whole process until the decision-making process to the end for you. So I think that's the, I think that's the big, that earns a lot of trust with your union when you do that. All your unions, not just, not just one union. Yep?
And I'm not going to add anything else. I think Bill has... I think Bill has, uh, really encompassed how we work and what we do with all factions, the administrative, the classified, the certificated, uh, and all groups within certificated, not just teachers, we're talking nurses, school psychologists, and so on.
Um, it's just, another thing that came to mind that I, I do think is important, that when we vet a candidate, uh, I think, uh, somebody said that, uh, candidates bring us, uh, you know, recommendations of people that are, that, that we should talk to, and we talk to them. But we also go back into the district and we talk to the teacher-union leaders, whether they're on their resume or not. Uh, we also go back and talk to the, uh, classified union leaders, whether they're on the resume or not. And then we talk to you about that, and sometimes we, you know, we share that, obviously, in confidence with you. So I think that's another way that we engage unions in this process, is through the candidate's, uh, past experiences.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your question. I think it was about our pricing. Um, our pricing is based on the time and effort that we dedicate to our searches. Um, it is typically benchmarked at 32% of the expected salary. Um, we understand that if you all, and that's, we bid based on what is published, uh, about the superintendent's salary, so if you all are intending to revisit the, uh, outgoing superintendent's salary, then we would be happy to, to discuss our pricing further.
Thank you. Member Kayata, do you have anything else?
Um, just want to kind of wrap it around by just saying, um, you know, I am kind of forming a preferred choice based on the presentations and the previous information we got, um, but ultimately, you know, I think when we previously decided to bring these three firms, we brought three great firms who can really add value to our community. Um, and it wasn't, to Terrence's point, maybe we didn't necessarily see it, but in each of these, in their packets, I did see that they had looked at our district, and I do get a sense that they have the, um, wherewithal and desire to really understand our community values. So I think we're going to be good with, no matter who we pick, um, and just curious to, I, I would like to go to action tonight if everyone else would. That's my point.
Okay. I think, um, at a certain point, I'll see if there's consensus around going to action. Uh, and then we're going to go to, uh, Member Pritchett.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentations. Um, it's, I've been on this board for 10 years, and unfortunately, I think I'm the only one up here who's actually been through a superintendent's search more than once. Um, and, um, I don't expect you guys to come up and answer these questions. I actually don't want to take action tonight, um, and so I, I want to plead to this board that, um, we actually, um, that the questions that I have, I, I appreciate the questions that you guys have already, um, answered for my colleagues, and I appreciate, uh, my colleagues for coming up with these really great questions, um, but, um, some of the other questions that I had, um, were, and I think McPherson, um, had, um, and Jacobson had answered some of them in their presentations, but I'd like some additional information about, just like, your five-year placement, and what the percentage rate and your success rates have been, um, some recommendations and phone numbers that we can reach out to over the next two weeks of just like, for, that we can call ourselves. As board members, maybe we could put together a committee, um, and before we place of who we're going to hire, um, and exactly who, your, where you're pulling from. Where, are you guys building your own systems? Are you pulling from, like, where, where's your pool from? You're giving me that look of like, you can come up and answer a question if you have a question for me. I just want to know exactly where your, where your pool is from, if you're not understanding exactly what I mean.
Well, I think the key answer would be is, we do not maintain a pool. Is that what you're...
You're just putting, you're just putting it out there and asking for recommend, or for applications?
Correct.
Okay, got it. I understand what you're saying. Okay. So maybe, maybe from this board, maybe we can ask for additional, um, references that we can come back and, um, and then we can bring it back in two weeks?
Well, if I may, I think it's important that, uh, a, a search firm doesn't maintain a pool. That's not necessarily typical, but my...
I think some search firms do.
They may. We do not. And then the, the other point I was going to make was, um, oh, gosh, regarding, I'm sorry, you, there was two parts to that, I think.
Just about our percentage. Uh, my understanding is that we are, um, at 85 or 86% of superintendents that we've placed are still on their placement for five years or more.
That's fine. If you guys want to, if, what I was asking is if, um, all of the search firms could, it's all in here, yeah. So if we could have additional time to be able to review and then bring this back?
And in our major packet, we have identified all the contacts that would be suggested for recommendations, if you will, or, um, information pertaining to the school districts that we've worked with, the, uh, contacts and board presidents that we've worked with previously as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Member, uh, Pritchett. Um, we're going to go to Member Segura.
Um, okay. Just hearing all of your presentations, you're obviously qualified for the work, you've done the work. Um, I am wondering, like, more specifically, like, Alma has gone into it a bit, um, after, uh, Member Singh's, Singh's, sorry, um, question, but what makes you a, a firm that can help specifically our district? Have you looked into our pasts and our concerns with previous superintendents, um, and like, the district as a whole, its members, its faculty, its students, its parents, but their own concerns? Have you looked into those, and how would you apply those in the hiring process?
I think that, thank you for that question, an outstanding question about, have, have we looked into your district? And the answer is, to some extent. Uh, part of this, uh, process is that, that's, uh, a large part of the work that we do too, in, in this process, is, as we go in and, um, set up interviews and set up times for people to come in, we ask you who we should be talking to. We learn an awful lot, and we relate that back to you. We, uh, are transparent about that. Uh, we actually pull out the issues that are there. Uh, many school districts will, um, use the, uh, work that we do as a environmental scan for their next, uh, round of, um, uh, setting their strategic plan. So I think that, um, both Aida and I have personal knowledge of your district over a long time, uh, both being residents, uh, here, close to Sacramento County, or having lived in Sacramento County for a long time. Uh, we know the district, and we know the, um, the joys, the wonderful things that have happened in this school district. I remember going to your HISP program and saying, boy, we got to copy that when we go to Florin Ice School and open that school. You know, that we have that personal knowledge, your, of your school district. But we also know of the issues that, um, uh, that have been, uh, tough, uh, the, uh, we've mentioned some tonight. And those will come forward, and we will talk with you very openly and transparently about them. So I think the answer is, we have a lot of knowledge, but we don't have it all, and we'll find out more. Uh, and I would say that Aida and myself are very dedicated to this. There is no limit that we give to that work. So I just wanted to say that we'll dive deep when we, uh, give you, uh, information about your district. Aida? I took all the time, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I think one of the, the major things is, we do meet with students regardless of, uh, what high school you go to. We go to various high schools. We meet both in person. Uh, we ask not just to meet with leadership, but also other groups within, uh, the high schools. And, uh, we've also gone to middle schools and elementary schools.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, as you've noted, the search firms are very similar. We do all of the things that you just heard, that McPherson does, but I think what differentiates us is that we just completed, um, the searches that I talked about. As Kancy knows, um, we did the chief academic officer, so we had stakeholder interviews, we spoke with candidates, we have an understanding based on that. The same with the, um, executive director of LCAP, and we're currently doing the chief information officer position. So we've done a lot of interviews with people and talked about what the, what people from your community are looking for, so we have that basic knowledge as well.
You know, one of the things that I've not heard, is one of the things that people love about here, is that everyone loves the kids, and everybody was, wants what's best for the kids. But as superintendents, and when I was out there, of course, we always hear the negative, so we do know that, what they are. We just haven't said what they are. But one of the things that I have heard is transparency, is one, wanting more information, not getting enough information, uh, decision-making, uh, and morale. Uh, so those are things that are out there, um, in the community. Um, but one thing that I can say is that people, stakeholders, love being here, and love the children. So I wanted to mention that.
And then lastly, Gracie, kind of the question relating to the characteristics. I think one of the most important things that we've come away from is that boards of education and the candidates respect our process and our communication. We communicate regularly with the board of education, and I think that's an important factor from the beginning to the end. And of course, our track record, I think, speaks for itself since 1996. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us today? From Alma?
I believe the question was around, what, what will we do to get to know you? We will continue to do a deeper dive, um, from our initial research, and part of that is part of the, as others have mentioned, the community engagement that happens up front. So digging beyond what we can read in, in the media and hearing the stories from the community, um, including the staff and students, um, we do take that very seriously. Community voice and equity of voice is really important to us, and it helps us tell the story of this district to candidates as well. We don't want to sugarcoat, uh, for our candidates, our candidates either. We want them to have an authentic view of what, uh, what they will be walking into when they, um, if they make it to the final round, and if they're selected for the position.
Any more questions?
All right. I really appreciate all of your answers. Um, I do want to just say, like, I think that the experience that, um, the leadership associates, um, that you guys have, um, you guys are already familiar with the district, which I think is important, and I also appreciate, um, um, you guys, um, your response previously about the students' lived experiences and the parents' lived experiences, and applying that in the interview process, I think is a really important step, um, in making sure that it isn't just the board members participating in, um, the decision-making process, because the community is a big step, and it's like, that's what this decision is going to be affected. Um, they need to be considered with their opinions, um, and that includes faculty and, uh, students and parents as well. So I appreciate, um, your response to that and your past work with that. Thank you.
Wonderful. And then we're going to have, uh, Member Phillips.
I'm talking to my, my colleagues here, so just keeping it real, um, over the last few years, decades, or however many superintendents we've been through, um, there have been very limited improvement with regard to, you know, our, our black and brown students. So to answer or respond, uh, gently to my, my colleague, Mr. Kayata, is sometimes we have to be revolutionary in the choices that we make, that will help us make the choices, that will improve the outcomes for our students here. So I am not 100% comfortable with just taking the cheapest bid, because you guys are all doing what you're doing. You know what you're doing, this isn't a concern, but, um, what I'm looking for, um, in a, in a search or talent agency is, I need my auntie, and I need grandma, and I need grandpa, and I need people who have, of, uh, more of a vested interest in this district as a community, as opposed to, you know, addressing needs of stakeholders and making sure that we, you know, do our, our due diligence. We have to do that in order to make this work, but, um, as a, as a board, um, you know, we have to, we have to recognize that this choosing of this superintendent by us is going to have to be revolutionary. It cannot be simple. It may cost us a little bit more. I don't want to scrimp and save on the next 10 years for the next child to come through and perhaps not be able to read at grade level by the time they graduate, if they graduate. So, um, to my, to my colleagues, I, I appreciate sometimes when we get comfortable with, you know, the, the canned information. These people all know exactly what they're doing, say new to them, but we are a different, different situation here. So I just want to make sure you guys understand that. I, I don't want to cut corners at all, um, on this process, but we, as a board, are kind of working on putting ourselves together, um, so we, we can, at, at times, have disagreements. They may not be the world's best agreements, or, or, you know, the world's safest disagreements, because we're all human. Um, I am curious as to how, um, or if I, any of these groups have had experiences with, um, I guess, uh, board of education groups bubbling over, having moments when we're talking about what's really important to us as opposed to what we want just to get by. Because, because I'm going to say it, what, what seems to be the case is that we have, as a board in the past, made a choice to bring a superintendent in that was, was allowed to run free and do what we, what we told them to do. And the shift that we are making in including our communities into all of these discussions is not something, um, that's, that's, that's comfortable for us. This is, this is different. We are making change. And so, like, we're, we're calm and cool up here, but I just want you to know that at some point, you guys are going to get in a room with us, and be like, what in the world? That level of patience, that appreciation for us being human beings is extremely important, but knowing that our focus is on making monumental and revolutionary change for our students is more important than a dollar sign. And I really want us to make sure, yes, it may be 50 grand we could spend on our kids, but what good is 50 grand if we've left 40,000 kids behind? So I, I just want to make sure that we all understand that, that we are, we are a group of humans, and we are all different. We represent a whole, I guess, I don't know, we represent a bunch of Sacramento that, that doesn't always get along. So I see the nodding, and I see the smiling. You guys know, you've been in these rooms. So I want you to expect that that's what you're going to get when you work with us, because we are still trying to figure out who we are as a unit, but we know the importance of what we need to do in choosing the proper superintendent, and that it has to be a revolutionary...
Are you done?
No, I'm away from Terrence, stop talking.
Oh, no, I had, I had a question.
Anyway, so I just want y'all to know, we, we, we struggle, but regardless of our struggle, we got a goal, and that goal is to make sure that our children succeed with the proper leadership of somebody who understands what our community wants for their children. I'm done for now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do you, do you like to respond?
Just very quickly.
Okay.
I would want to agree with you in that that monumental change is critical, that healthy organization that you talked about is critical. It's the, the superintendent and super, and governance team relationship is the closest thing to a marriage that I've ever experienced. And I've been married for 51 years, as I twitch a little bit here. My point is, simply that I would agree with you. Healthy organizations get those work, get that work done. We also have available for, uh, governance teams, uh, we no longer call them retreats, we call them advances. That's how important it is for a governance team to work directly with and in conjunction with your superintendent accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Member Pritchett.
Sorry, I just want to apologize. I was looking at this packet, and I see that there, all that information I was looking for is in this big packet, and I was in the basement of a hospital all week, and it didn't have Wi-Fi, so I failed. It is my fault as a board member, so I'd like to ask for additional information to be able to do... be able to do. I hope I'm not the only one to be able to call references that are listed in here. I do recognize some of the names that are, I know some of them are no longer on boards, but I know, like, you know, some of the neighboring districts that are in here that we, you know, we know some of these colleagues in here that are still on these boards that we can call and get references. So that is it. I just wanted to apologize. I'm okay to say when I'm wrong.
Member Segura?
I just have a directed question towards the, I don't want to say, leadership associates, et cetera. I see a projected timeline for both Alma and for...
Mr. Anderson.
Do you guys have a, like, estimate timeline of when you believe the superintendent would be put in place?
We do, Gracie. I'm sorry. Thank you. We do, Gracie. Our timeline that was developed, proposed timeline at this point in time takes us through a variety of events in the search process, with ultimately the board approving a super and contract at a regularly board meeting right around December 14th, if we're not mistaken. So we are ready to advance this search accordingly, with potentially a new superintendent beginning on January 1st, or if it suits the board, perhaps the beginning of the second semester of your school year.
But that is totally...
That's, yeah.
That is totally up to you, and when we do the initial meeting, as we said, it's your timeline. So whatever timeline you're most comfortable with, but this is our proposed timeline.
It is in the packet as well.
It's in the packet.
And it's in your packet.
Do you have any more questions? Member Segura? Okay, now we're going to hop over to Member Caata.
So I'm hearing that we need more time, so I definitely am going to withdraw my previous statement. I was comfortable moving today because I think that all three of these firms meet what I think our needs of a district are. I do appreciate Member Phillips' question and statement, because I'd like to clarify, I also want all that, and I think that is all important, and I think that each of these meet that. And so to me, this is about who are we most comfortable working with to make sure we can deliver. But with that said, definitely, we should take our time and make sure we do this right.
Okay. And Member Jean?
So I have zero questions. It's more kind of a statement of just wanting to be honest. I don't know how to have this conversation on the dais in public. I don't know how to share unformed thoughts, random concerns. I don't know how to make this decision right now, so I definitely need more time. But I also recognize that a big part of the Brown Act is that we do have these conversations in public, because the community and that transparency and that being part of the process is important. So I look forward to continuing these conversations and figuring out how to do it on the dais in a way that is productive and gets us where we need to push our district to, which includes one of the single most important jobs we have as the seven of us, which is choosing the superintendent.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. For the people at home, it makes you guys hear me. So what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and, you know, I'll do a consensus check here, that board members, three board members who have suggested more time. And so by raising of hands, is there a consensus around the need for more time? Can you just raise your hand real quick so I can just see? Okay. So thank you so much for coming today and presenting, and we will get back to you at another date. Appreciate your time. All right. Okay. So now we're going to move into 11.2, the money report. Jesse, nice to see you. The floor is yours. Oh, hello.
Good evening. President Rhodes, members of the board, Superintendent Allen. Give it a moment for the presentation to come up. There we go. All righty. This is our 2223 unaudited actuals financial report, presented by myself and my colleague, Cindy Tao, our Director III of the County Services. So, next slide, please. Oh, sorry. There we go. This is our table of acronyms that you'll see throughout the presentation, as well as within our executive summary on this item. Taking a look at the agenda, we'll jump into our comparison of our unaudited actuals compared to our 2223 estimated actuals. We'll then move on to our multi-year projections with the beginning fund balance plugged in from our unaudited actuals report, and then we'll close out with our summary, next steps, and approval of the 202223 unaudited actuals financial report. This is a high-level comparison table of our unaudited actuals to our estimated actuals. As you may recall, the estimated actuals are presented as a part of the adopted budget, which went before the board in June, in the June board meetings. The first-most columns are the estimated actuals, where the middle columns are unaudited, and the right-most column is the comparison of the variance in each of those categories. Overall, we saw a variance of $38.7 million on the unrestricted side of our budget and a variance of $39.4 million on the restricted side of our budget. And over the course of the next few slides, we'll go into more details as far as the changes or the factors behind those variances. Starting off with our unrestricted side of our budget, obviously, $38.7 million, that is a pretty significant change from our unaudited, or excuse me, from our estimated actuals, so we wanted to share some of the primary factors behind that. First, taking a look at our interest revenue, we did see an increase of $8.2 million over what we projected. Just to add a little more context to that, through our, we received this revenue quarterly, and through our first three quarters, we received about $2.6 million in funds. And then, as we were closing out the books, we received additional information from our county treasury for our fourth quarter funding, which came in at about $6.7 million. So that led to a significant increase over our projected amounts. Moving on to our unrestricted lottery funds, we saw a $2.3 million increase there. This was due to a change in the state enacted budget. As of the May revise, the funding rate was about $170 per student. That was bumped up to about $200 per student in the July enacted budget, and so that is the figure we use to book our additional revenues. The next item was about $6.2 million in textbook adoption expenditures, which were shifted to restricted funds. This is part of an intentional one-time shift of unrestricted to restricted that we presented actually a few weeks ago as a part of the AB 1200 and public disclosure process related to the collective bargaining agreement. We also had about $3.6 million in textbook expenditures or encumbrances and $1.3 million in school bus encumbrances that were shifted to 2324 because the items weren't received by June 30th. And lastly, we also saw about a $1.9 million increase in operating expenditures primarily related to an increase in utilities costs. Taking a look at a few other factors behind the unrestricted change, we also saw a decrease in our contributions to other funds. Starting with the charter fund, we actually received $1.6 million in declining enrollment relief funds, one-time in nature from the state, so that eliminated a need for a contribution in 2223. And the adult education fund was able to utilize the higher education emergency relief funds, as well as some other restricted funding sources, to eliminate the need for contribution in that fund as well. Taking a look at our special education contribution, we did see a decrease of $10.6 million over what was projected. $6 million of this was related to spending down one-time expiring special education funds that we received to mitigate the COVID-19 pandemic impacts, and so those expired as of June 30th, so we wanted to make sure we were spending those funds down. A few of the variance areas were additional site and department purchase orders carried into 2324 again, because they weren't received by June 30th. And we also had, the last item, I pause, there's a slight misstatement here, there's certificated salary savings of $4.1 million, of which $2.3 million was related to vacancy savings, and $1.8 million was related to a one-time shift of three professional learning days from unrestricted to restricted, which is again a part of an intentional shift related to the AB 1200 disclosure and collective bargaining agreement. And with that, I'll pass it to my colleague, Cindy.
Good evening, board members, student board member and interim superintendent. My name is Cindy Tao. I'm going to present a few slides. I'm the Director of Accounting Services. This slide here is the restricted revenue changes. It'll provide you a summary of the changes. Highlighted is adjustment to federal revenues due to revenues less than projected in title programs of $15 million, S R funds of $30 million, and special education funds of $2 million. Another factor is state revenue adjustment provided below, restoration of one-time arts, music and instructional material grant of $9 million, reduction of one-time learning recovery emergency block grant of $7.8 million, new award of $4.8 million for kitchen infrastructure and training grant, restricted lottery increase of $1.7 million, reduction to STIRS on behalf of $4.7 million, local revenues decrease of $350,000 due to adjustments to local grants. Next slide, the summary changes of expenditures. There's just a few highlights. Certified salaries, a decrease of $3.7 due to expenditures coming in less than projected in S R funds, title programs, and one-time LAR BG. Salaries, classified salaries, decrease of $2.4 million due to adjustments in ELOP title programs and S R funds, benefit adjustment per mention above, and STIRS on behalf adjustment of $4.7. Restricted books and supplies decrease of $24.7 million due to portion of expenditures carrying over to 2324, and expenditures less than projected in S R of $6 million, title programs of $11 million, ELOG of $2.3 million, restricted lottery of $2.3 million, and CTE grants of $819,000. Other factors related are operating expenses decrease to $42 million, primarily due to expenditures coming in less than projected of $5.6 million in S R funds, $3.1 million in title funds, $18.3 in ELOP, and $9.75 in special education. Last, a capital outlet decrease of $13 million primarily due to S R funds, I'm sorry, S R projects work in progress continuing to 2324. I'm sorry if I'm speeding up. This is a snippet of our 2223 unaudited actual ending fund balance. I'm not going to go through every single line. I'm going to focus on our ending balance, starting from unrestricted. Ending balance unrestricted is $135 million. Moving to the right, we have restricted of $122 million, combined total of $257 million. There are components of the ending fund balance provided below leading to our unappropriate fund balance. I want to highlight our committed components of the end funding balance, which is $85.8 million for unsettled labor negotiation. The cost, which will be updated with future board resolution, in addition to assignments, which is $2.9 supplemental and concentration carryover funds. I do want to mention that in the board packet, we did have a little typo on the fund balance. I believe we had 37, but technically it was 33. It was too late to get that corrected. Next is our multi-year projection with updated beginning fund balance, which is the ending fund balance from 2223 unaudited actuals from our 45-day revised budget. So I just want to focus on the beginning balance on the left column here, where is the beginning balance? We've updated that portion here, which I believe the last time we presented, that was last month in August, when we were presenting our 45-day budget revise. I do want to mention, and want to know that this does not include other budget adjustment or revisions since then. And to finish the presentation, we have Jesse.
Thank you, Cindy. Moving on to our summary and next steps, a few closing items we wanted to highlight. We do have next our year-end audit, which is scheduled to be conducted in October through November and presented in December. We also have our next reported period of the 2324 first interim report, also to be presented in December. This will include the updated beginning balance from our 2223 on our actuals report. And as Cindy mentioned, since this report is just a focus on actuals for last year and doesn't include any other budget revisions, you'll see those come to the board during the first interim report, including the collective bargaining agreement adjustments, as well as AB 1200. It will also include updates to our fund balance commitments, and since that requires a board resolution, and that is why you still see that number included from adopted budget flowing through this report as well. And then lastly, just wanted to add that we also recently received the budget approval letter from Sacramento County Office of Education, and due to continued approved budgets, the SCOE is not assigning or appointing a fiscal expert per education code, I really do make available to the district fiscal advisory services as necessary to the district and at no charge or no cost to the district. And with that, I wanted to open up to any questions.
Thank you so much. We are going to go to public comment first. Do we have any public comment on this topic?
We do not.
All right. This is all great news. So... If it's in that. So we're going to go ahead and go to Member Jean.
Thank you for all your work on this one. I kind of wanted to speak to my colleagues and the public. School finances is very confusing and based on so many projections. And what's amazing about the unaudited actuals is, in the labor world, we wait for these every single year. Can we go to page nine and put that back on the screen? Because when we get into conversations about projections and how much money we're going to have and what we're going to spend and where we're at, the unaudited actuals, this is all real dollars. What you are looking at right now on page nine, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I am not the expert here, is these are the actual dollars of our budget for 2223. So when you turn, if you go to page 11, I think it's, or the next page, page 10, these are all projected numbers and guestimates based on enrollment and ADA and health benefits and OPEB and all these other things. So go back to nine. But when you look at the actual unaudited actuals, it's like the end of your year where you sit down and you look at your budget, how much actually came in, and how much did we actually spend, and how much do we actually have left over? None of these are projections. So these numbers are very concrete. The bummer is we're seeing them in September, two months, three months after the school year ended, and that's when we finally get real numbers. So I just wanted to make that very clear. I have no real questions or comments. I'm really excited to see the health of our budget. I'm excited to see that the revenue that's coming in is more than the expenditures that we have, which often in our projections, that starts getting really muddled and hard to understand. I'll definitely point out that the restricted fund is encroaching on the unrestricted, which is always part of our world, and that's just education for you. And that ultimately, that unappropriated fund balance is exactly how much money we have sitting in our bank account that has not been decided to be spent anywhere. So just wanted to share all that, if that is helpful. Thank you, Jyste. And thank you for the presentation, and Jesse, again, for stepping up and making all this happen. I know it's been asking a lot of you and your team, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Jean.
Thank you, Member Jean. Once again, all good news. Member Caata?
So echoing some of Member Jean's comments, I just want to thank you both for being here. Thank you for continuing to doing really just top-tier work. Even after Rose has left, it's like, I don't notice the difference, because you all are just so great at your jobs. So thank you so much. Thank you for bringing up SCOE's letter, because the entire time I was reading this and listening, it's really just kind of the elephant in the room. I have two questions related to it. One is, you mentioned that we're not required essentially to pay for a fiscal advisor, but SCOE, in their letter, says they will appoint one. So what is that? Do we have to accept them, or we're just choosing to accept them and SCOE is paying for it?
Sure, that's a really good question, and it's kind of in the details. I guess the nuance is that they can appoint, they can't currently, but the way the education code works in Section 42127.6 is that if a county office sees that a district is demonstrating fiscal instability or has concerns with that district, then as part of remedial action, they can appoint a fiscal advisor to help with their financial problems. In this case, since we have a positive budget, we've had a positive budget for the past few years, it's more so an optional to have fiscal advisory support as necessary and continued at no cost.
Okay. And another issue that is kind of alluded to in SCOE's letter and the SACB article about it today is essentially saying, your finances look good based on SETA, but because you haven't settled with anyone else, you're going to fall into debt, and that's why we're still watching you. Can you clarify? Can you clarify how we have budgeted for raises that we expect to give to our other bargaining units as well as unrepresented employees?
Sure, that's also a really good question. So as we shared in the presentation, this doesn't include any updates from the AB 1200 presented a few weeks ago. But what it does still carry over from the adopted budget is the 85.8 million dollar committed amount within the ending fund balance. That number originated from a 6% estimated cost for every unit as well as an increased cost for substitutes. And this was what was on the table back in the spring. And so that was how that number was developed and built in to our ending fund balance. And then as we move throughout the year and continue conversations with our label partners, we'll either include those as budget revisions within the budget itself or continue to assign or commit funds until we do reach agreements with our label partners.
Okay, but essentially, if increased, you know, expenses related to other bargaining resolutions are proportionate or in line with what we did with S C T A, we will still projecting to be positive at the third year out. And that's a budget question. I know it's not in this packet here today.
Yeah, that would be, we would have to, I think, perform a little further analysis on this just with the unaudited actuals ending balance plugged into beginning balance in our future projections. But as we continue to provide updates to the board on the budget, we can provide more information on that as well.
Okay. And this is a statement, not a question to you all. As Tara said, it's sometimes hard from the dais to filter thoughts, but I find SCOE's letter and the previous letter they've sent to be just really offensive to us as a governing board. We are playing by their rules. We are following the ED Code and we have amazing staff who understand our finances and advise us of how to do our jobs. And we do our jobs. This is not a choice between a board who is choosing to throw away money and be in debt versus not. This is a choice of a board who is deciding our priorities and deciding that our priorities include having top-tier employees who can fill off our positions and raise our kids. So to continue getting letters, no matter how good our budgets are, saying, well SAC City, we always have to watch you. Stay in your lane.
All right. So I just, so yeah, so we're gonna do.
Oh, I'm back in queue.
You're back in queue. I saw the queue. There's a lot of people in the queue. I would say, and for member Kayata, I just say, you know, when people are watching you constantly, I just think of them as your biggest fans. They're just our biggest fans. SCOE is our biggest fan. So, so we're gonna go, we're gonna go to, to member Singh and then member Jean after that.
I don't even know if I should speak right now. Okay, I'm interested. So first of all, thank you Jesse for the update. I think it's good to reiterate the fact that deposit certification does showcase a competency, ability, and dedication of this board, but also of our staff, including you both and everybody who works with you. I think we all know that we are dedicated to this district. We've been talking about that. We have parents who come in here and talk about what their needs are. We have staff who are talking about what changes they want to see. And I think no one understands the district and its needs better than the seven of us up here and the staff that sits in this room. So I do understand that the letter has language that would prefer was not in there, but the way I read it is that it's a, if you need it. And then I think that's something that we leave to our district and our leadership to if they need that support at any time. It's not on our dime, it's good with me. I just think that it's really important again that communities, families, parents, students understand that this is a big deal for us to get deposit certification as much as we have over the last couple of years and for us to move into a position where you can come here directly to us and advocate to us directly and we can actually have the financial know-how and ability to create the changes that are necessary to give your children a quality education. So just want to say thanks for the update and I'll leave it at that.
Well said. We're gonna go to member Jean.
Member Kayataz, thank you for your questions and your comments about the SCOE letter. As you were chatting, I realized I wanted to say something too, which is if you look at the page that's here, there is literally a line item that says committed of 85 million dollars. And that was debated by this board, just board, decided by this board in partnership with our district staff who is bargaining on our behest with our labor partners. That is our responsibility and job. And to make any kind of assumptions that we're not doing that, and then as I'm actually looking at the letter, because I just came across it, it's saying we have a declining enrollment, which is not true, right? We're up by 1.7%, 2,000 students? I don't know if my numbers are correct.
So I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it is slightly improved over what we projected.
It's more than we expected, which is super exciting. Our ADA is also positive trending based on the presentation we got two weeks ago and it's the beginning of the year and we're hopeful, right? So I just, I'm with you about the, we are elected to do this job. No bargaining agreement can happen if we don't vote on it. That is what we were elected to do. So this implication that somehow we're not doing our job just really, I find it incredibly frustrating. And just wanted to call out that I think we are being responsible and we're working together and thank you.
Thank you so much to all my colleagues through the frustration and the jokes on here. Do we have anyone else who wants to hop in before we let these wonderful people? Okay, so, nothing, okay. So I just, once again, thank you so much. One of the things that we want to be clear about to our community is that Sacramento Unified School District is not in any fiscal oversight by SCOE. We do not have a person that needs to come in and work with us on our dime. We are not paying for that. If our team decides they would like to, then they can. Once again, Sacramento Unified School District, families, labor partners, employees, this is historic moment in our district because we've been over, under fiscal oversight of SCOE before majority of us were on the board. And to have that ability and power back, the power of governing, the power of allocating our funds and directly impacting our students without Overwatch of some major fans, this is historic for us and it shows that we're moving in a new direction. Our budget is beautiful and we will continue to do great things for our district. And I want to thank everybody in the audience who's here, who's watching. We do this kind of work for you guys and me and my colleagues really appreciate this. So thank you. All right. And so we're going to go, we're gonna go to, we're gonna move it.
I'll move it.
Second, move to second. Student preferential?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Hell yes.
I don't know what's happening here.
Member Phillips?
It's beautiful.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Rose?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Six yeses and one hell yes.
He's fine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. This is, this is great. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yes. Floor is yours. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Board President Rhodes, Board Members, Interim Superintendent Allen. Can you hear me?
We can, but if, if you can speak up a little bit, I think it's on.
My name is Tammy Mora. I'm in Human Resources.
Hold on one second, Tammy. For folks in the back.
We're excited.
I know you guys are excited. We did do something historic, great, but we want to continue the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Tammy Mora. I'm the Human Resource Compliance Analyst. I'm here this evening to present to you and ask for your approval of provisional internship permits, applications. ED Code provides an opportunity for districts to waive a portion of credentialing requirements in order to allow educators a little more time to complete their credential requirements. In order to submit provisional internship permit applications for certificated employees in need, CTC, the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, requires a public notice process and board approval prior to submission of any permit applications. That is why I'm here this evening. Oops. Sorry, forget to change the titles. The applicants listed here are currently working on meeting their program requirements in order to become eligible for their intern teaching credentials. These permits will enable these teachers the opportunity to complete their requirements set forth by C C T C and remain in their positions while they continue their work with students. Staff recommends approving these waivers, permit requests, excuse me.
Very quickly, before we take a vote to move into action, is there any public comment on this topic?
There is not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move into action?
Move.
Second? Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're moving into action of approval. Move to approve. Do we have a second? Second? And roll call vote? I mean, student preferential, sorry.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rose?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Hello. Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Allen. My name is Chamberlain Seacrest and I am the Environmental Sustainability Manager for Sacramento City Unified School District. I am pleased to introduce our carbon neutral goals and guidelines for all SAC City Unified Buildings, which will guide the process of designing, constructing, and modernizing our school buildings and facilities across the district. And as always, here is our core value and guiding principle that drives all the work we do at facilities and across the district. This includes recognizing that climate change impacts, including extreme heat, drought, power outages, and poor air quality affect our most vulnerable students and families the most. Here are our acronyms for this presentation, which I will give you a moment to read. Here's the agenda for this presentation. It is a high-level overview of the carbon neutral goals and guidelines that you have in your packet. This process started with the development and implementation of the Long-Term Facilities Plan, which includes an equity index for identifying funding priorities based off student and community need. The Facilities Plan Steering Committee was also very clear on the need to include sustainability efforts into our capital projects program. As part of the development of the Facilities Plan, we had a third party do an energy audit for all the buildings in our portfolio. This provided us with energy conservation measures like suggested LED lighting retrofits and window replacements for each building. But we recognized that energy conservation measures were just the beginning. Yes, these measures will lower operating costs and greenhouse gas emissions, but alone, they don't do enough to ensure that our buildings are being updated or designed to protect the health, wellness, and learning potential of all of our students, staff, and families. They also do not do enough to meet the state's goal of carbon neutrality by 2045. So with the help of SMUD, we partnered with the New Building Institute, an independent organization helping to drive buildings to be better for both people and the environment, to help us to create these carbon neutral goals and guidelines, which I will provide an overview of in a moment. They also use the data from the energy audit to determine the energy use intensity for each of our buildings, which you can find in your packet. E U I is calculated by dividing the total energy consumed by the building in one year by the floor area or square footage of the building. The resulting number is a measure of the energy efficiency of the building's design and operations. The lower the number, the more energy efficient the building is. In 2018-19, the average E U I for all of our buildings was 35 K B T U per square foot, which is on par with the California K through 12 E U I average. We created specific goals and guidelines for each type of facilities project being done. So in your packet, you will notice that this is broken down into new construction, major modernizations, and maintenance projects, which are things like lighting retrofits or H V A C replacements. Our big picture goal is to be carbon neutral by 2045. That means that by 2045, we will have eliminated carbon emissions from our building's energy usage. It is worth noting that this includes the energy profile of our utilities. So our electricity provider, SMUD, has an even more ambitious goal of being zero carbon by 2030, which is actually a really good thing for us. And this is the same goal, the carbon neutral by 2045, as that stated in California Executive Order B 5518. And California cannot achieve this goal without school districts achieving it as well. So in order to achieve this goal, we need to lower our average building E U I, both old and new buildings, to an average of 25 by 245. The next slide will go deeper into how we plan to accomplish this by meeting targets for our new builds, modernizations, and retrofits. This also means that we cannot have onsite gas combustion by 2045, so we need to start focusing on electrification now. And to clarify, the carbon neutral goal, the carbon neutral and E U I goals in your packet are the what, and the guidelines detailed in the other packet are the how. How are we going to achieve these goals? In order to achieve, to achieve an average E U I of 25 by 2045, we created E U I targets for each project type. Please note that the target EUIs listed here do not include onsite solar. We need to make our buildings energy efficient first and foremost, so the systems we put in them like solar or our H V A C units will not be oversized. These project-level E U I goals have a range because different building types typically have different EUIs. For example, primary schools tend to have lower EUIs while secondary and administrative buildings tend to have higher. We will achieve an average E U I of 25 by meeting these project-specific E U I targets, which again can be achieved by following the guidelines listed in your packet and summarized in this image. But I want to return to the bolded statement at the beginning of the presentation. When it comes to climate change, the cost of inaction is far greater than the cost of action. Now, it used to be that in order to make this statement true, you had to include the quantification of qualitative things like environmental and social harms. And I will get to those in a minute because they are very important. But I want it to be understood that this statement is now true for financial costs alone. For one thing, designing and building carbon-neutral schools is no longer more expensive than traditional designs. There's a lot of research to back this up. One example is the research paper, "The Cost Barrier Illusion," by the Department of Energy and the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. On top of that, natural gas prices are extremely volatile. There was a point this year in winter when natural gas prices more than doubled in price. Electric prices- Electric prices have and should continue to be more stable. In addition, the more energy-efficient we make our buildings, the more we will save on utility bills, which are paid for through our general funds. And I know that we just saw there's an increase of 1.9 million in utility bills. So that means more money for students and families. So those are the financial costs of inaction, but there are environmental and social costs as well that should not be ignored. The statement quoted in the environmental and social bullet points, so these statements, are from the most recent Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, or IPCC, report. The IPCC is part of the United Nations and is the world's most authoritative scientific body on climate change. Every time they put out a new report, they also put out a succinct headline statement for policymakers, which is around three pages. They do this because they know that policymakers are changemakers with time constraints, and they want to make sure their research is understood and used. I have provided copies of the most recent policy headline statements for your review. They rank their statements from low confidence, meaning they don't have high-quality or consistent evidence, to very high confidence, meaning the statement is backed by the highest quality and most consistent evidence possible. Essentially, very high confidence is in scientific terms, like saying they are certain. In a nutshell, the report states that climate change is a serious threat to humans, and if we don't act now, then it will in fact be too late. The impacts in Sacramento, again, include extreme heat, poor air quality, increased fires, power outages, droughts, and floods. And as we already know, these impacts will disproportionately harm students of color and other vulnerable populations. We have an opportunity here to both mitigate climate change by reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to the changing climate by greening our schoolyards, adding solar with battery backup, installing all-electric HVAC systems that will make classrooms more comfortable and support better air filters, and eliminating onsite natural gas combustion, which amongst other harms is bad for air quality. Our next steps are to, one, introduce and hopefully pass a board resolution to approve these carbon-neutral goals and guidelines at the October 5th board meeting, to then embed these goals and guidelines into the standards and specifications binder received by all of our design teams, and then train our own maintenance and operation team in the new goals and guidelines. So thank you so much for your time and thoughtful consideration of these pressing topics. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment before we go to my colleagues?
One speaker signed up, Mo Kashmiri.
Mo bounced.
Okay.
No Mo.
No Mo.
No, no more Mo. Okay. And we have, then we have Member Jean.
Just wanted to ask, why a resolution? Why is that the next step?
Why a resolution? You can probably give the answer.
So, thank you. A resolution will be helpful to make sure that these goals and guidelines are solidified in policy, that will carry the weight of the board behind them, and then we can then use that to put into our standards and specifications when we talk to our architects. We can also use that to help guide our next steps in facilities as well, when we're starting to plan what new schoolyards need to look like in addition to buildings. It just, it carries the gravitas of your support.
And what was the process for, what is the process for the developing of the resolution? Who's involved in the language and all of that?
Nathaniel and I wrote the resolution. Right. With New Buildings Institute.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do want to add, real quick, so it was mainly drafted by New Building Institute, who has done this in three other districts before us. And then from here, Chamberlain and I worked on making it fit the context of SAC City Unified.
Wonderful, and we look forward to reviewing your resolution. I'm going to Member Kayata.
First of all, Chamberlain, thank you so much for your passion around this. I'm really glad that this is not something we're checking boxes and, you know, dry subject matter sciency. This is something that I can feel from you, you know, really affects our kids and our communities. So thank you so much. I'm really sad Mo's not here, because he's talked to me about this extensively, and I don't think there's probably someone in Sacramento who cares more about greening our schools maybe than you, is him. SMUD has a goal of 2030. I know we'd like to aim for that, but what is preventing us from committing to that by partnering with SMUD?
So your question is why we wouldn't have 2030 as our goal instead of 2045?
Yeah, like, can we work with SMUD? Because they're offering...
Yeah.
Like, we could maybe buy into it until we gather ourselves into their existing purpose.
Yeah, so their energy profile will be 100% at least renewable plus, yes, their goal is to be 100% renewable by 2030. So if we electrify, we need to electrify our buildings, because we still are using natural gas for heating and natural gas in the kitchens. So we would need to be electrifying our buildings to then take advantage of that energy profile.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way for us to essentially offset that by partnering with SMUD on other, you know, carbon negative efforts that they're involved in, so that we can hold ourselves, we don't get rid of the gas till 2045, but we're kind of buying into or offsetting the gas?
So to do carbon offsets? I mean, we are partnering with SMUD on a couple of initiatives, so we're looking at community solar, we're looking at school resiliency and energy battery backup. So, I mean, I am in meetings with SMUD every other week. But you can do carbon offsets, but carbon offsets are just a monetary.
Yeah.
And I, you know, if we, if we really want to be reducing and mitigating our climate change impact, I really believe that we need to be electrifying and removing natural gas from our assets. As well, the state of California is moving towards eliminating natural gas in general. So the quicker we are in getting our buildings electrified, kind of the better off we'll be, because natural gas, I believe, will become more and more expensive as these requirements are put into action.
Okay, and, I mean, to be clear, I fully appreciate the approach that you've proposed. I think that it's reasonable, and I'm not asking to change that date, because I know you put a lot of thought into that, and that's what we can do without, you know, just throwing money into the wind just to do it. But, and I'm not asking, I guess, for looking into offsets, just to feel good about it. I think we're really lucky in Sacramento to have SMUD as our power provider. We don't live over the county line and have to deal with PG&E, and I thank myself for that every day. Well, I guess we do for gas, but...
Yeah.
If there's any opportunities for outside-the-box thinking on that, I can't think of a power organization in the country probably that would be more innovative and willing to work with us.
Yeah, and I agree. 2045, I mean, you know, the IPCC does say we need to act in the next 10 years. 2045 is really a date for us, because we need to start, because we need to put it into our standards and specifications. We need to get our design teams using these standards and specifications as soon as possible. So 2045 is a date where we can kind of do this zero over time model, right? But if we want to accelerate that, that's a potential as well, and I agree that SMUD is someone that we can look at doing this with. But 20, but this is just a way for our design teams to be able to understand our carbon neutrality goals, so that what they're designing and remodeling is meeting them.
Okay, and my last comment, and I don't think it's necessarily related to this resolution you're all proposing, just within the context of environmental justice and doing more than just as a district being carbon neutral, but making sure, for example, even if we're not using gas, that our schools in lower-income areas aren't just blacktops, right? And they don't have dead grass that no one uses. And that we put trees in that lower the temperature of the sidewalk and the street, not just for our schools, and really be a beacon in our communities for, you know, we have large parts of Sacramento that don't have trees as much as other parts, right? And our schools can be little mini forests. We have a lot of back acres on a lot of our sites, right?
We do. We're a large landowner in the city of Sacramento, and I am 100% behind greening our schoolyards with trees and with nature play areas and with outdoor classrooms, and making our, you know, asphalt and poured rubber, some of the hottest materials out there, right? So making sure that, right now, we're shading the areas that have it, and then eventually thinking about how to replace some of them with lower, lower heat-causing materials.
And, I keep talking. I see Nathaniel standing behind you, and I know he could talk forever about the schools that we are reconstructing right now, have that 100% in mind, and just looking forward to continuing those efforts, but really do appreciate this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kayata. Member Villa?
Quickly, just want to say I'm glad that this resolution is coming to us, because it's, again, it's putting our stamp on it and our, and our making sure that we are holding everybody accountable for what we want to do in this district. Really love page eight, all of these goals. I mean, spot on. This is exactly what we've talked about, what we've heard, and we need to do. Do you know any local school districts that are somewhat doing these things or planning? I personally have not heard that, so I just want to know what districts near us are maybe mirroring some of these goals that we are aiming to complete.
So we used, when we were making this, we looked at other school districts through the New Building Institute. So they've worked with a lot of school districts to kind of pilot this. I remember the, yes, okay, so South Lake Tahoe would be the closest. We looked at Portland. But I know that Oakland, San Francisco Unified, Los Angeles Unified, they're all looking at it as well, because 2045 is a California, you know, executive order, so they're considering it.
I would also look at San Diego is kind of a bright model for us to all look at as well.
Yeah. But I'm also part of a sustainability network, and New Buildings Institute is great at connecting, so I definitely agree that there's no reason to reinvent the wheel, and you should definitely look at other districts and see what they're doing and jump on, and, you know, follow in their footsteps if you can.
My point with that was, I love that SAC City is somewhat of a pioneer here in this region. We typically aren't a pioneer. We are always...
Yes, we are.
But in the past, we have been a little, you know, we're behind on things, but this is like such a big initiative for our district that I would love for others to mirror what we're doing here in the future. So thank you for, again, your passion. You guys are doing good work, and let us know whatever we can do to support this in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Villa. Member Phillips?
Quick acronym check, because it wasn't on the list. HRV?
Oh, HVAC. I'm sorry. So that's heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. So it's the units that provide conditioning and heating for the buildings. My apologies.
Okay, wait, wait.
Yep.
No, no, no.
Nope.
That might be it. So when you say ventilation and HRV, that HRV stands for?
Oh, I think it means efficiency. That's just a typo, is my guess.
Okay, I feel better. Okay. And then my other question? That's okay. So how is this going to affect the new buildings that we're doing with our new school construction currently?
Yep, that's a great question. So we, they know our EUI goals, right? So the new building constructions, because it hasn't been passed, it's not a requirement, but we've spoke with them extensively about the EUI goals. So they're making sure that in their energy modeling, that it's coming out to between 19 and 21 kBtu.
Also, if I can, I know when Chris, Mr. Ralston, goes out and is looking at even the smaller projects as well, one of the first things he is doing is bringing Chamberlain out to meet those architects and designers as well. So she can share the vision and purpose and direction for those designers, both on the smaller and larger projects.
Thank you. Do we have any other of my colleagues who want to hop in? Okay. I think this is great. It would be great to, Member Kayata's point, I look at it like this. I would love to be carbon neutral in my 40s rather than my early 50s.
I'd love to hear it.
So that's what I'll say there, and so if you guys can help with that, that would be great.
Amazing.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you all so much.
All right, so we're going to go into 12.1. We are still on time, guys? 12.1, Superintendent?
No report.
No report. All right, so 12.2, I'll keep mine brief. I just want to let you guys know that the board continues its work around governance and our board priorities. We've met last week, and we continue to meet. We are going to be finalizing our listening session soon, and we have a meeting this Tuesday as well. I want to keep mine very brief, but know that we're continuing to work to make sure that our community's voices are involved in how we govern and what we look like going into the next five to 10 years. With that being said, I will pitch it over to my colleagues for, oh, actually, you know what? I apologize. I thought it, but I was wrong, to my colleague, Member Segura, first for her report, and then we'll go to my other colleagues.
All right, so I'll just go over SAC real quick. Next meeting, we will be coming in to give you guys a bit of an introduction to the members and a few of the initiatives that have been brought to mind, so that way you, by the end of the year, when we do our report and our initiative report, yeah, initiative report to you guys, you'll have a bit of familiarity with what we're doing. And we're going to try to do continuous checkups throughout the year, so that way you can see the development process as well, rather than it just being like all in one place at the very end. And then, aside from that, I just want to kind of put it out there, as the superintendent is being processed, I would like you guys to keep in mind student perspective and bringing in student voices of what their needs are and what they're hoping for a leadership role that's brought in as this, like, major change is made in this district. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Now to my other colleagues, would you please hop in the queue if you have anything that you would like to report out? Okay, Member Villa?
Just a quick reminder, I just want to reiterate again that Sacramento City Unified School District is a safe district for all of our students and our families and our community. I just want to make sure that our community hears that from us. This is a safe place for our students, especially LGBTQ. So continue on the evening.
Thank you so much. Member Phillips?
Today, I had the pleasure of going to an Oak Park community gathering of community-based organizations. And just a couple of things that are happening in our area is Highlands Community Charter and Technical Schools is having a back-to-school night. And I think this is important to look at for adults who are going back to school, adults who are making changes in their lives. So September 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00, Highlands Community Charter and Technical Schools, it's behind Immaculate Conception on Broadway, 252033rd Street in Oak Park. And we're also having a Fall Family Night at our community center, and that will be happening, if I'm correct, October 6th, from 5:30 to 8:00. 120 slots available. Please book early.
Okay. Member Kayata?
So I'd like to address some of the public comments we had earlier this evening with essentially a public comment of my own. As a child, in K-12 education myself, I was in six different school districts. In sixth grade, I was in three different school districts, two in Southern California and one in Maine. I don't think I have actually yet gotten over how traumatic that was, to constantly have to meet new people, meet new friends, interact with new adults when you're a young child, an entirely different community. The process we have for essentially concapping our kids and stabilizing our schools and our teachers and our classrooms every year, I think, needs dramatic improvement. I know there are definitely reasons that we have to do it. We know that we have a lot of teacher vacancies, and so if we have a teacher who's available, it's better to get them into a classroom rather than have a substitute and a half-full classroom that hasn't been concapped. But with that said, I really would like to see us try to do more. But with that said, I really would like to see us try to do more. And if it's budget-related, if it means that we have to allocate more positions to have some flexibility, I'm 100% behind that. But I know it's probably a lot of logistics also, to the extent that we cannot avoid this process because we are an open enrollment school district and people do move. You know, people don't all just settle into their new house, their new apartment in line with our school enrollment calendar. We should do it as gently as we can. Our process right now, I've heard stories from parents as a board member, but previously as well, it is a harsh process. We do not provide families with the information they need in a timely manner. They're basically thrown out to the wind. You get a letter in the mail, hey, you thought you were at the school? Nope, you're not. And where are you going? We'll be in touch. And how are you going to get there? We'll be in touch. I can't imagine that. I'm getting re-traumatized even just saying this right now, thinking about my own childhood, and I wasn't forced to do it. My school changes were because of my family's circumstances. If we're going to concap kids, we should reduce it to the extent possible. We should have enrollment processes that anticipate this, and we need to do a lot better reach out and customer service, basically, to our families. That will also protect the school sites and the teachers who are currently bearing the brunt of it in lieu of any sort of leadership that we're providing at the district level. And I've spoken to this before, we need to invest in all of our staff, and that includes administrative staff and analysts and enrollment technicians at the district office who can provide these services that school sites can't or aren't able to because they can't be built up for this, you know, two-week process throughout the year. So I guess to that extent, I would just, I, two meetings ago, I had requested that we get kind of information on our current enrollment process so that the board could consider how we can work to improve it, and I would like to just reiterate that request and really just apologize to families who are going through this right now. I'm sure the explanations fall on deaf ears when your kid is being sent out. When you're a teacher who's being sent to a new school, you've already set your classroom up. Explanations don't do justice, but we can try to make the situation better.
Thank you, Member Kayata. Member Singh?
All right, I will try to keep it brief, but first, I just want to thank staff for working through and helping us get to choosing our new principal for Theodore Judah. I watched a process that included our teachers and our parents and our community come out and express what they were looking for, and I have every hope that our newly-selected principal will be able to accomplish the goals set out by the community and lead us in a positive direction there at Theodore Judah. In terms of Tahoe Elementary, I just want to address the fact that I was at back-to-school night yesterday. I just want to thank and just address the courage that it took for our teachers and our principal there to come here tonight, and especially Ms. S., who came to us from a different district with the specific desire to be at that school. Concapping is not easy. I think it's only right for us to address it and state that there are some conversations that need to be had for us as a board, and I'm looking to you, Lisa, that we can get some more information on how this works and what improvements that we can come up with so that we can avoid, as Taylor or Member Kayata said, that we do this as minimally as needed. And I think there's some solutions that we can come up with. So I look forward to getting that message and figuring out what we can talk about as a board. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Singh. And then we're going to end it off with Member Pritchett.
Thank you. As you've conducted this meeting tonight, the Rosemont community has got together at Rosemont High School and, with a candlelight vigil mourning the death of a recent Rosemont graduate, William Diaz Upton, who tragically lost his life in a horrific accident on September 14th. And I just want to uplift the Diaz Upton family tonight and ask that we adjourn the meeting in his memory.
Thank you, Member Pritchett, and we will adjourn in the memory of that family. Going into consent agenda, actually, 13.0.
President Rhodes, we do have one public comment on consent agenda.
Consent? Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Robin Mutchler?
Hello, my name is Robin Mutchler. My son attended William Land Elementary, kinder through sixth grade, and he is now an incoming eighth grader at School of Engineering and Science. Tonight, you have been asked to approve, one of the consent items is my appointment to the Parent Advisory Committee. Thank you, Trustee Kayata, for your confidence in me to serve our flourishing and I divert and diverse community within the pocket area of Sacramento. I look forward to working with other PAC members to support positive student outcomes, also to collaborate with stakeholders within Sacramento City Unified School District to ensure equitable and obtainable LCAP goals. I feel a close connection with our foster youth students, students in special education, and our low-income families. I will work diligently so to have their voice heard within our LCAP documents. And lastly, I would like to thank our leaders within Sacramento City, Superintendent Lisa Allen, Deputy Superintendent Mary Harden Young, the Director of Strategy and Continuous Development, Dr. Ed Eldridge. They have encouraged me and supported me in my application to serve on the PAC committee. I wouldn't be here without them kind of lifting me up. So thank you for that, and again, thank you for your confidence in me. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. No more comments. We have a motion and a second student preferential.
Aye.
Okay, and Superintendent?
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Vandewalle. Oh, okay, so now we're at future board meetings and dates, October 5th, 4:30, and October 19th at 4:30 for closed session, 6:30 for open session. And as you guys all know, we get here on time. 5.0, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will move it in memory.
Yes.
From William Upton Diaz.
Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor? We, once again, we are adjourning in the memory of Diaz Upton family. Good night, guys.